All right, now on the agenda is the time for public communications. It's the time to address anything to the commission. But if you're here to talk about short-term rentals, we're going to do a separate public communication just about that item later on the agenda. Okay, so anyone want to address us on anything not doing with short-term rentals? Just come up, sir, state your name and your address.
Address?
Oh, you don't have to.
Thank you. Mark Eber, resident of El Segundo. But I'm here tonight in my capacity as Vice President of Public Information for the American Planning Association. And before you is a sheet on commissioner training, which we hold every year. We specifically create a, or develop a track specifically for planning commissioners during our three-day conference this year will be held at, in Santa Barbara. If you'll notice, all the sessions are in one day on a Sunday. Early registration ends on July 3rd, and then it goes into regular registration. So I hope you'll take the opportunity to at least look into it and see if it's something you might be interested in. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close public communication. I had a request to rearrange the agenda. We have a quick presentation. I want to give everyone all the time they have to ask their questions, make their comments. But I'm going to ask that, I'm going to make a motion to move, is it the Safety Director's presentation?
Yes.
To move that up because we have a quick presentation about a, what's it being called? Cultural arts fee?
Yeah, the new proposed cultural art fee.
Okay.
And Melissa McCollum will be representing the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to move that to next on the agenda. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Melissa?
So, good evening. I am Melissa McCollum, and I'm representing the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee because they plan to go to the City Council on July 16th with a recommendation for a new cultural development fund that would increase public art and programming in El Segundo. Benefits of the plan are many. It will create additional public access to the arts, help drive tourism and revenue to local businesses, contribute toward realizing cultural equity and inclusion, and create opportunities for artists and art organizations in the community. Some of this work is already underway in public projects, public-private partnerships, private projects. For instance, on the left, it's a $150,000 project, Gateway Project for Signage and Art at the intersection of Imperial Main. And if that's successful, it's a model that will likely be replicated in other entries to El Segundo. The middle is a $100,000 proposal by artist Rebecca Lowry for an installation outside of City Hall. It incorporates one of the earliest maps of El Segundo and encourages people to think about all that has happened in the last hundred years. The middle one is a mural from the library by artist Nanda Bushakone and highlights contemporary indigenous experiences, also demonstrates arts and programming for all ages, children, teens, and adults. There's the potential to do so much more if the city and businesses and residents will join together to create a dedicated, consistent funding for arts in El Segundo. So, the Arts and Cultural Committee is looking for a million dollars per year for art and would use it to move forward these goals, to artistically enhance already budgeted capital improvement projects, advocate for art and cultural events on weekends to increase hotel occupancies, permeate the city with public art and programs to create a comprehensive community identity, award local excellence and commercial beautification, stimulate a higher level of art engagements in schools and civic organizations, and contribute to achieving the city enjoyable, which is a term coined by the committee. I'm briefly going to cover these. I know we're short on time, but just want to introduce the highlights of the ordinance, talk a little bit about the administration of the fund, share a couple of guidelines for the developer projects, fee comparisons, sample budgets, inspiration and measures for success, but I promise I will do it very quickly, so is that all right?
That's fine.
Thank you.
Don't feel like you're in a hurry.
Thank you. And we are going to do, obviously, a much fuller presentation at City Council meeting on the 16th, so we'll talk more, much more about it there as well. But in terms of the highlights, it will be on commercial and industrial development only, projects with a valuation of $500,000 and more applies to new constructions and remodels. The proposal is 1% for both paying into an in-leave fee or choosing to do a project on-site. And then, based on feedback from stakeholders, there is a proposed $100,000 cap for developers, for projects. The other detail for projects that are 7.5 million and less, the recommendation is to pay into the in-leave fee only, and that's for the Culture Development Fund to use for all of those projects we've talked about previously. For valuation of seven and a half million and over, that's when the choice would kick in for doing it on-site or to pay into the fund. There are a few exemptions, such as nonprofits, rehabilitation work for seismic safety, or to comply with government mandates like American Disabilities Act to repair buildings that have been partially or completely destroyed by fire or natural disasters, and also for projects that are designed and dedicated to performing arts and museum spaces. In terms of fund administration, it would be a special expenditure fund administered by the Library Service Department in coordination with finance, public works, planning and building safety, and the City Attorney's Office. There would be an annual budget that would be proposed by the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee and approved by City Council as part of their annual budget process. Standard city approval limits would apply. And if you're wondering about the composition of the Arts and Cultural Committee, definitely a lot of artists with specialties in various disciplines, but there's also an attorney, the founder of a local nonprofit, architects, a really varied experience, and similar to appointment process, obviously, by City Council for three-year terms and serve at the will of the council. Terms of developer projects, we do want it to be collaborative, to get the best possible project, both for the developer's side but also for the community, so it would be a two-step process where developers would present their plan and the artist to the committee for approval recommendation, and then before that certificate of occupancy would be issued, there would be a final review and approval by city staff. And Sam did do some research about how our fees for plan checks and permits compared to other cities nearby. He plans to go into this in much more detail for you at another time because there's a larger story as well. But really, the numbers show that we have very, very low fees compared to the other cities. As you can see, for the 500,000, you know, our fees are 95% lower. At the larger projects, they're up to 196% lower. So, and that's not even including that 1% fee that most of the cities that we compare to have in addition. Sample budgets, very, very rough, but the committee is very interested in addition to the developer projects, putting a large chunk into already-budgeted capital projects to artistically enhance them, definitely a couple of significant permanent art projects per year, community experiences, and that can be temporary art, but also things like speaker series, author fairs, artist walk, all sorts of opportunities there, and then also grants for arts and art organizations. Budgets, we talked about some samples within El Segundo. The Teen Center will likely also be renovated soon, so there's an opportunity there. Comparative projects nearby, the Inglewood Senior Center had a $200,000 project. Manhattan Beach has a project out right now for their City Hall. Malibu spends about $100,000 a year for their speaker series. Art Walk is $70,500. In addition, they don't have to all be huge expenditures. Pasadena does mini-grants of about $750 to activate different parts of Pasadena on our particular day for art in place. We love ideas, smaller-scale ideas like that as well. This is just an example of all of the cities that have enacted the art ordinances already. You'll see that many have had them for decades. In LA County, 36 of the 88 municipalities have enacted a proposal. Northern California has it. It's also beyond California. I think Philadelphia was the earliest back in 1959.
Do you know if they're all at the same amount, 1%?
They are not. They do vary. There's a great spreadsheet that I can send to Sam if he can share with you that shows the different choices. The standard is 1%, but they do make different choices about the valuation. There's also some civic and some residential in addition to the commercial, so there are different choices to be made. Committee has studied all of them, and this is what they think fits best for El Segundo right now. Just share quickly a few pictures of inspiration. It's the AIDS Memorial outside of West Hollywood Library on the top left, utility projects in Culver City in the middle, canopies and benches. Those are some samples of how to enhance the capital improvement projects. Got an art piece in front of the waterfront, as well as a kid's art plaza from Japan, and then just a reminder that the fund would be used for programming also. These are our measures for success. Did all of you see the Creative Economy Report that went out recently? That's something we'd love to share with you as well. It was something that Beacon Economics did and showed that there's about 3.3 billion of output within El Segundo from creative industries, about 262 creative firms, and equates to 6,000 direct jobs. So we're interested in seeing that continue to expand. They also talked to them a lot about why they choose to do business in El Segundo, and they talked about things like looking for space that's where there's good atmosphere, aesthetic and authenticity, as well as a high-quality, tight-knit, innovative and collaborative creative community. So, we want to support that with some of the projects that we're doing. So I won't go through all of those in the interest of time. But that's the basic overview of the program. Would love to hear comments now, or feel free to reach out to the Arts and Cultural Committee or to me if you'd like to know more or provide feedback.
So, Sam, even though it's a development fee, something goes right to City Council, doesn't come to us first for any type of review or approval? This is more informational than anything, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Melissa, do you know if a development kicks in 100 grand, does that art stay at that project, or does it just go into a general pool and Arts and Culture figures out where to spend the money best?
Sure. So, at seven and a half million, which would equate to 75,000, they would have the choice of either contributing to the fund or doing a project on-site. Under that, we are asking that the fee go to the fund.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Maybe this is a question for Sam or for planning, but in a comparable year, like last year, based on the number of development projects, do you have any idea how much that would actually mean? If those projects have been charged the 1% fee, what that would be in actual revenue to contribute to the fund?
Yeah, we looked at that, and, you know, some of the parameters have changed, like such as they put a cap on, so I don't know exactly where the numbers would fall, but without a cap, we looked at all projects above half a million dollars on commercial projects at 1% would bring in close to a million dollars.
A year?
A year.
And you went, it's a great question. Did you just go last year only, or have you looked in like the last couple of years or five years, or?
We looked at the last three years.
Three years. And so would it be about the same for the last three years?
It's roughly about a million. It may be anywhere from 800,000 to 1.1 million. It's in the ballpark. But then, we put some caps in, so it'll probably bring down the number a little bit, but it's a pretty high number.
And is there any data about prospective employers coming or developers that would not come here because of this fee?
So that is why we looked at the comparative data for the cost of construction, just to make sure that it wouldn't be a hindrance, but I think our fees are a lot lower, so hopefully it wouldn't impact that. And then also, just because so many cities have it already, we don't think that it would impact it, but certainly keep an eye on it.
Right, right. And that's a write-off for them as well, right? A tax-deductible write-off?
No, it's a city fee. Like police, fire, school.
You're in Charny, you can figure out.
Cost of business.
Cost of business, all right.
Well, thank you again so much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Talk more.
Thank you. She wasn't expecting such a large audience.
All here for you.
Okay, next on the agenda is consent calendar. There are no items, which brings us to written communications. We've been provided all the emails. You printed those for us, correct? Okay. Thank you, everyone, who sent your emails. They've all been reviewed. And that brings us to the item of business today, which is consideration and possible action regarding recommending an approval of Zone Text Amendment to allow and regulate short-term rentals, which is EA 1180 and Zone Text Amendment, ZTA 1701. Can we have a staff report on this matter, please?
Of course you may. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission and public, just to provide a real brief history of where we've been and how we've gotten here. This particular item, you know, dates back to July of 2017 when the Planning Commission that summer had originally considered, you know, what to do and how to proceed with short-term rentals. That recommendation was ultimately forwarded to the City Council later on that year, at which time the City Council had directed staff, primarily the Police Department, to create a loud and unruly gathering ordinance.
Can you speak in the microphone, please?
Sure. There you go. And that came before the council back in 2018, and ultimately, Party House ordinance was approved and adopted, and went into effect in the summer of 2018. Since then, we came back to the Planning Commission to get some direction in terms of how to proceed with short-term rentals. There was an initial thought on the Planning Commission's part to perhaps prohibit them, specifically prohibit them, and then we came back and there was some additional conversations and public testimony, and at which time the item was brought back to the Commission back in December of 2018. And at that point, the Commission directed staff to prepare a short-term rental permit process with some regulations. So in essence, your direction was to create a permit process, have zero or minimal tolerance for violating the Party House ordinance, now that was in effect and we're allowed to use that, and require rules to be posted inside the short-term rental along with some other conditions, operational conditions that we've been working with the City Attorney's Office to develop. So here we are today now, and we are ready to provide that to you and the public. So, a couple of points on the draft ordinance. So it does make modifications to the municipal code into titles of the code. Title 15, which is the zoning code, it does allow, you know, provide for some new definitions of what short-term rental is and a short-term rental permit or a unit. It does allow for the operation of a short-term rental on a parcel in each of the residential zones through a short-term rental permit process. And that short-term rental permit and its process is contained in another section of the municipal code, which is entitled for the Business Regulations and Licensing section. And that, like I said, contains a new short-term rental permit process.
Could you speak more into the microphone?
I will do my best. I apologize for that. So, some of the highlights, if you will, of the ordinance, it does require a short-term permit to be obtained on these properties. There are certain operational conditions that are required of each of these short-term rentals, and I'll go into a little more detail in the presentation, but these are just the highlights. It doesn't afford the immediate revocation for violating the Party House ordinance just one time. And it also allows for the revocation after two violations of just the general short-term rental ordinance, i.e. the conditions, operational conditions in which they need to abide by. The short-term rental permits also require that we create a registry, and that would be available on the city's website, which would contain pertinent information with regards to the location and the contact information of the host or the owner. There's also some requirements on the hosting platforms. So for example, Airbnb and some of these other, any platform that is utilized to advertise short-term rentals, there are some responsibilities that they need to abide by. Primarily, they would be responsible for collection of the TOT. They would need to disclose to the city each short-term rental that is listed or located within the city that they're advertising. And they would also be required to only book short-term rentals that are on the city's registry. And again, that would be available to the public as well. So those are some of the highlights. So getting to the actual permit process and, you know, when someone comes in, this kind of lists out, kind of an eight-step summary of what is entailed in obtaining a permit and what we go through in terms of permit application, submittal, we verify information, review for violations, permit gets approved, there's monitoring that we do. And the way the current ordinance is set up is, it's set up as a pilot program. So, right now, it would sunset at the end of 2020. So, there is some rhyme and reason behind that, and I can let the City Attorney elaborate on some of the legalities of that, but at this point, what we are looking at is a pilot program, which would take us through the end of 2020.
Do you think that's going to be enough time? I mean, by the time this gets past City Council, if they want modifications, this thing may not even come to effect until 2020.
I mean, I guess we could cross that bridge, but it does give us the flexibility to...
A year from, should it be approved, or however it would be approved, a year from that date is really what you're saying?
Correct. Yeah, we could structure it. There is some concern on the City Attorney's Office with regards to really going out further than a year on any pilot program, and you can elaborate on that if you'd like, but I know that there is some concern with vested rights issues that if you, you know, go out more than a year, you know, then you kind of have, you kind of give the property owner a certain legal argument that they could potentially use about a vested right. So, right now, we kind of want to limit it to one year, and right now, because of the way things are kind of lining up, it seems like it would just be for the 2020 calendar So that's how it's initially set up. If the... If the short-term rental permit process is allowed to move forward after that, yeah, we would come back and, and, and get that, either extend that sunset clause out or it would just be something that would be allowed through the permit, uh, process. In either case, the short-term rental permit would be allowed or would be approved for that one year. They would automatically expire after that one calendar year. And so it's not an automatic renewal process. So anyhow, let me go into a little bit of the, the actual permit process and what that would entail. So it first would start off with obviously submittal of a short-term rental permit application, which would be submitted annually. At that point, uh, what, on the left of, of the screen, you'll see that those are the actual, um, steps. On the right is kind of the highlights of what we do internally, of what would happen kind of behind the scenes. So during this stage, you know, the, the short-term rental permit application is submitted to business licensing, along with a business license application. The application is then sent over to the Planning Division. Planning Division would kind of take the lead in terms of then verifying some of that information that's contained on the short-term rental permit application. So things that we would be looking for is, A, do they have or are, are in the process of, of obtaining a business license? We would look at the zoning, uh, because that's going to dictate, uh, the number of, of, um, short-term rentals that are allowed on any one given property, because we are allowing for only one per property. We would also be looking and verifying ownership information. We would ensure that the signed affidavit is submitted and signed, testing that the, uh, location is their principal residence. And that was one thing that the Commission wanted us to, to, to look into and, and include. And another thing too is that we would require that the owner and operator have general liability insurance of at least a million dollars. So those are the things that we would be looking for and verifying upfront. The next step in that would also be, would then be to look at whether there are any violations that have occurred. Again, just to reiterate, you know, what I had indicated earlier was, if there's two violations of the short-term rental ordinance and its conditions, then that would be a grounds for, uh, denying a permit. Uh, and if that's, if that has occurred within the last 12 months, we, we would not approve for that or we would not approve it. If there's a one, one violation or citation issued for the loud and unruly gatherings ordinance, that would be another reason why we would deny a short-term rental permit or renewal of one. Payment or non-payment of, of transit occupancy tax, TOT. And also non-payment of water bills, because that is something that has, uh, been an issue in, here in the city. So assuming there are no violations, or if there's just one violation or it's been more than 12 months, then a permit is approved. Like as I indicated earlier, it would be valid for a, during the calendar year. At that point, what we do as staff is, is also, we would put or create a registry that we would pull, put on, on the city's website, uh, to provide this information to the public, so that if there are any issues, they, they can go in there and, and look at if, if there's a particular property on their, on, on their block and they're wondering if they have a short-term rental permit, uh, that information will be contained on the city's website as well. So some of the, uh, uh, operational conditions that, uh, these short-term rentals would be required to, to abide by. So, uh, some of these operational conditions include parking and the availability of parking on site. That requirement is one parking space per bedroom. 24-hour contact. That would also be put on the registry and displayed, uh, would be kept on file. Police Department would have that information. We would have that information. Our code enforcement officers would have that. But again, it would also be displayed on the registry. Again, our intent is to put that on the city's website as well.
You're saying that you're going to put the phone number of the owner of the property on the city's website next to their property?
That is our intent, yes.
As opposed to someone calling someone else, saying, hey, code enforcement, enforce it, and them calling it? You're just going to put it up there on the website?
Correct.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, uh, other operational conditions include, uh, you know, requirement of trash pickup, uh, prohibition of, of any signage that advertises the particular unit as being, uh, available for short-term rental on, on site. So we don't want, you know, lawn signs out there. You don't want to see lawn signs that advertise that particular property as being used as a short-term rental. They are required to, to display the conditions on the inside of the house. We need to kind of tweak that language to make sure that, that, that it's on there, because right now we have, um, the requirement of, um, of certain things. But anyhow, we can amend that to ensure that all conditions are posted on the inside of the, um, of the short-term rental. Couple other things is, uh, as I indicated earlier, one, short-term rental per property. So if you have, there's an ADU and, and a residence out there, only one of those can be used at any one given time as a short-term rental. When it comes to our two, uh, same thing. If there's a duplex, only one of those two can be utilized as a short-term rental. Again, the, uh, the owner needs to, um, have that listed as their primary residence. Uh, another unique thing that we've also put in there is that there's only one booking at any one given time that can be, um, that would allow for, uh, the occupancy of that short-term rental. So that is, uh, you know, something else that we've kind of tried to, to, to ensure that you don't have multiple parties staying, um, at any one given time. It's just one party, one booking. So then, uh, as it is approved, uh, during the calendar year, we would monitor and respond to any complaints as they come through. We would work in conjunction, both our code enforcement and our police departments, to track and respond to complaints that are received, uh, and, and by any violations. Citations may be issued for, for those violations. Again, automatic revocation if you have two violations of the short-term rental ordinance or one citation of the Party House ordinance. So the permit would expire at the end of each calendar year. Uh, no automatic renewals. And, um, the initial permits do have an expiration of a sunset date. So unless it gets extended or, or the, uh, it becomes something that is allowable by the Commission and, and City Council, uh, then any renewals, uh, renewal, uh, permits would also expire at the end of each calendar year moving forward. So once that's done, um, they then reapply and we go through the process again. Again, it's not an automatic re, you know, renewal. We go through the process and start at step one again. So that kind of gives an overview and some specifics about the permit process. At this point, staff does recommend that the Commission take public input and, um, ultimately adopt a resolution that would be sent to the City Council. So with that, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Can I ask you about parking? The requirement is that you have to have one parking space on the property for each bedroom that you rent. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything in here that says that your renters have to park on the property in the space provided by the property owner?
No.
Okay.
It just needs to be made available.
As one of the rules, because that's the point of saying you have to have ample parking. We don't want people taking up street parking if they're renting on someone's property. They should also park there. Is that the idea?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any other questions before we open public communication?
Does the address of the property that has the rental within it, is that address listed on the rental site? So Airbnb or VRBO is the address of the property listed on their site?
Well, I guess that, that goes to how it's presented or, or advertised on the site. But at least from our standpoint, we would have the address on the registry. In terms of how it's advertised on, on the, uh, on the actual platform, we don't have any requirements with regards to putting up the actual address.
And the reason I'm asking is because people could advertise on one of the rental sites without having registered with the city. And how would that be monitored?
When I was drafting the ordinance, I took a look at a couple of these sites and a couple of the cities. And I was actually surprised to see that they actually do include maps, parcel maps, with the individual parcels identified. There's some danger in doing that and identifying the location of a short-term rental, because people will oftentimes be absent. But, uh, yes, uh, from what I could tell, uh, these sites generally do list the addresses of these parcels.
Because in my experience, that's not so.
And, and same with me. Typically, they'll show you an area and they'll say, you know, there might be a, a three or four block window they'll show. And you don't get the address until you do the actual booking, in my, in my experience.
Oh, okay. Let me ask this. Will you have, when you get your application, an application number that goes with that property? Some kind of permit number or something?
Yes.
Okay. So it'd be possible we could require any person who's hosting to clearly post their permit number if you're renting in El Segundo, so that we can tie it to the property that way?
Oh, yes. That's what they would do, yes. Include the, uh, property number.
Well, the, the El Segundo, whatever you're going to call it, short-term rental application permit number. You can make another requirement as a host. You have to post this in your advertisements. That way, we've got a number. And if you see someone at, in El Segundo without a number, then you know, okay, there's a problem there. That might help.
Yeah, it'd be a two-level thing. They're not allowed to advertise anything that's not on your registry at all.
Right.
Right? So the ones that they do advertise should necessarily include your registry number.
Correct.
Yeah, we can add that in there as well.
I also wonder if the service like Host Compliance, is that the, the, uh, third-party service that you're interested in engaging? I wonder if they have access to that data and can help police that. Because, you know, I, I think Carol's right. I think that's the, the sort of the, uh, the dangerous missing part of that is how do you really enforce?
Yeah, I don't know if they have that data or not. I don't know if that third party has that.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't either.
And the city hasn't decided if they're going to enforce in-house or use one of these services to try to enforce compliance with this yet, right?
I don't know the answer to that.
No, that, that would be ultimately a decision by the council. The reason why I put that as, as additional information is just to let the, uh, the community and, and the Commission and Council, ultimately the council, know that, you know, there are firms out there that can help with this. And they could, you know, uh, they have a lot of, um, resources that they can use to monitor multiple sites at any one given time, far more, um, uh, expeditiously than, than, than it would do, take staff to do that.
Eduardo, talk to me about the, um, the owner occupied part. We have owner occupied. They don't physically have to be on the premises. They could be away vacationing. And they could either, I guess they wouldn't really, it wouldn't be a room. It could be a back house or it could be their whole house. That's more home sharing. And I also didn't see anything, uh, about a maximum number of days per year. Had that been discussed?
So in terms of the, uh, home sharing versus, we didn't, we did not make a distinction between that. And that kind of goes hand in hand with the fact that this would need to be the principal residence. Well, what's the principal residence? According to the ordinance, the principal residence means the place where the owner resides for more than half of the year. So presumably if they are there seven months out of the year, they could rent out portions of their house as a short-term rental. They would just be onsite, living there. While the other five months where they're away, they could, they would have the ability to, um, rent out the entire house, just that the owner would not be there physically. I mean, that's kind of what could happen.
Can you repeat that again? I missed that.
I mean, that, that is a possibility.
A hypothetical that you just gave us. What was that? If they, they're, it's my prim, primary residence.
Right.
And three months of that year, this hypothetical.
Uh huh.
I could rent out.
The entire house, because presumably they wouldn't be there.
I'm off vacationing, so three months. And then what could I do with the other seven months?
The other seven months, I mean, because we don't make that distinction or have that restriction, they could still continue to rent it out. They would just have to also be there, because presumably that is their primary residence.
Right.
So it would kind of be a hybrid of both a short-term rental, home share type of situation. Now, with regards to your, your other question about a limitation on the number of days, I know that we had some discussions with, with that. Uh, I know that that wasn't a blatant, uh, direction from the Commission. Uh, we did speak, uh, to our City Attorney about that. And there was a lot of, um, issues with the enforceability of that. I, and one of the things that you, you may recall in one of my earlier presentations was City of Santa Monica had a similar restriction. And they really had a hard time with monitoring and enforcing that, because, you know, it would be very staff-intensive to, you know, really go out there and, you know, surveil the, the property, if you will, uh, to ensure that, you know, it, it is being owner occupied or, or not only, but, but, you know, you have a certain number of days and trying to log that. And ultimately, the enforceability is really difficult for that.
The onus has to come to somewhere. I mean, in order to enforce anything that we're doing, we have to be prepared to do that. So, I mean, just because it, it's more work. To limit the number, how are we going to monitor anything that happens? The TOT tax that's due, how does that get, is that all done through the home compliance company? Or is that something that is?
So that, that is a requirement.
Honor system or what?
It is a requirement that the, um, that the owner needs to pay that along with a requirement that the host platform does as well.
But I just say, I just say that I've only done this much and this is how much I rent my rooms for, and so here's my money?
I think the money goes through Airbnb or whatever it is. So wouldn't it be the platform's responsibility to collect that tax as part of the transaction and send it to the city?
So what's the relationship between Airbnb and the city? How does, how does that connect, dot get connected?
I, I would just want to speak about, uh, we spoke to Host Compliance about that. And I specifically asked him that question. It is an honor system, um, where somebody reports that, uh, they used short-term rental for 50 days last year. And, um, they would give us a report on the number of days, which days, and, and for how much. And they would give us the TOT, give us the TOT tax. And, uh, sorry, TOT tax. And then they have the ability to go back to the records by, um, how it was advertised, how people responded to say that, you know, I stayed there on this date. It was a nice experience. They have the ability to capture information of people actually booked it for those dates that the person, um, said that they did. So there's a, um, they said they have the ability to audit what, um, somebody reports in the TOT tax.
So Sam, I want to be clear then, so that an organization like Airbnb or, or VRBO would not collect or would not be expected to collect the TOT tax when they collected the rental amount as well?
No, the, the ordinance is written that, that it does require, there are some, uh, hosting platform responsibilities. That is one of them, that they are, that the hosting platform, and it's listed on, uh, page 11 of the actual ordinance. It starts at the bottom of page 11. Hosting platforms shall be responsible for collecting all applicable TOT and remaining the same to the city.
Okay, that's what I thought I'd read. And I wasn't sure I was hearing that. I just wanted some clarification. Thank you. If someone is on vacation for five months and they rent out their house to several people over the period of that five months, who is going to be responsible for that 24-hour response call?
The property owner.
So if the property owner is in Michigan, how is, how is there going to be a 24-hour response? Or if they're on a cruise, or they're sailing to New Zealand in their own sailboat?
Right, so ultimately it would be, it would be the owner. However, um, in the information that, that they do provide us, they, they do need to provide us with someone who is and can respond to this, you know, on a 24-hour basis and must come, must, must, um, respond within two hours of a complaint. So if that is the situation and we try to reach out to that. is the situation and we try to reach out to that person and they cannot, or they're not, you know, available, then they're not really in compliance with the ordinance and that could be then deemed a violation, first violation of the ordinance.
Makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
And if it happens again, that could be a second violation.
And then they lose their license. Okay, thank you. Good, that's a good clarification.
I want to go back to the, limiting the number of nights annually. And the only thing that I heard that staff talked about was because of the time, the potential time involvement. Are there other negatives short of what happened in the City of Santa Monica? But...
Well, it's a policy decision, obviously. You could cap the number of nights that any particular short-term rental could be rented during the year. The question is enforceability. How would you know how many nights?
How are we gonna know anything is the point?
That's true.
Right?
That's true. It's even, it's not even a responsibility that you could put on a hosting platform because as you know, several of these things exist. I mean, if we only had Airbnb in the world, there was only one, and you capped it at 30 nights a year, well then Airbnb could keep track of that. But you couldn't very well hold Airbnb responsible for booking night 37 when that's only the eighth booking that they've done in a particular year and all these other hosting platforms are responsible for the rest. So, yes, you could cap the number of nights per year, but enforceability then becomes the issue. How enforceable is it?
But it does seem that posting everybody's information on a city register implies some sort of self-policing. So if there was a limitation put on maximum days, then in the same way that people call about violations, I'm sure that people would call about extended stays.
I think you're only thinking about someone who's renting out their house.
Correct, yeah, and I do think...
If someone's renting out an ADU in the back, then why would there be a limit on how long, if they're living on property and renting out a bedroom?
Right.
Why would there be a limit on how long unless that causes some type of other problem?
And it's probably the discussion process, but it seems like there's a distinction between limiting home-share days and limiting whole rentals.
But we don't distinguish between home-sharing and short-term rentals in this.
But maybe we should.
Why?
Just what we're talking about, perhaps.
Well, I mean, if somebody, you know, and this is just throwing it out here, if somebody is going to be sent here on business and they're going to be here for six weeks and they want to rent a house for six weeks and they obey all of the rules and that falls within the rules of this ordinance, why would we object to that? I don't, I don't, I don't know.
That would be home-sharing. Did I not see that a maximum 30 consecutive days for short-term rentals?
Home-sharing is when absolutely owner-occupied and you borrow a room within that person's house.
Owners are physically there, yes.
They're physically there, right, as opposed to having the whole house.
Whole-home renting, yes.
But even for home-sharing, why wouldn't you want, if somebody's behaving themselves and paying the rent and we're collecting the TOT, why wouldn't you want them there for six weeks?
Or put another way, what's the goal of capping the amount of days, I guess is the question.
Yeah, better said.
That's a good question. It, I guess, I guess since it's sort of a pilot program, if we're going to head in that direction to limit it, because the, I am not for any of it, but my colleagues here had staff go back last time to head down a path to create a very strict environment so that we wouldn't have issues where we would have neighbors and it wouldn't be detrimental to our neighborhoods and we would still create and maintain the community feel, which is why people come here and do want to share homes. And so, that was just one thing that I thought would help control it if we had a limitation on the number of days.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not objecting to what you said. I just wasn't understanding the goal. And if somebody is going, has to live in their home for more than seven months or six months?
Over 50% of the time.
Over 50%. So if they have to be there for six months and a day and they rent the house out for five months and 29 days, for example.
That scenario is a good scenario because they're there long-term. They have a vested interest. They live in a community. The difference is the transient people that are the Friday, Saturday night, and I really don't know, but it's that quick turnover, that turnaround where you've got lots of people coming and going from neighborhoods because that would be a good scenario.
Yeah, but see, so then maybe I'm misunderstanding, if we're going to limit the length of stays, it seems to be defeating the purpose of getting a stable rental population. I'm not arguing in favor of this.
A stable rental population feels different than what this ordinance is allowing. Because this is, this is not, these are not long-term renters. These are, these are, these are taking the place of a hotel so that they want to come for one or two nights.
No, I absolutely understand what you're saying. But what I'm hearing is let's limit the length of stays, you know, limit the number of nights that somebody can stay. But maybe I'm misunderstanding what you're saying.
Yeah, allow me to clarify that. I think you're talking past one another. What Commissioner Newman was suggesting was a cap on the number of transactions, booking transactions. These are, we're talking only about short-term rentals here in this ordinance. A short-term rental is less than 30 days. If it's more than 30 days now, that's perfectly legal. Anybody can rent any house in El Segundo for compensation for 31 days, not pay any transient occupancy tax. It's not a violation of your ordinance. This is regulating short-term rentals, less than 30 days, which are generally considered to be more commercial in nature. Commissioner Newman, I believe, is suggesting that, let's just say it's Friday, Saturday nights, right? We only want somebody to be able to rent their unit for 15 of those, 15 nights in any given year. Maybe it's 30 transactions, right? That would be like, it could be 15 individual days, it could be 15 weekends, but it would not place a cap on the length of the stay. Any short-term rentals, you're saying the maximum number of short-term rentals, the maximum number of rentals that are less than 30 days that you can do in any given year.
So it's the number of transactions, not the number of days?
Right.
Thank you for the clarification.
It could be related to a number of days, but not the number of days per stay.
Much more clear, thank you.
The number of short-term rentals in a given year.
Is that what you meant, Brenda?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
But what you described is not written into the deal right now.
No, there's no limitation in this, other than it has to be owner-occupied.
Right.
Primary residence. You can't have an apartment or a second home in town that all you do is rent out Airbnbs. All right, any other?
One quick question that I think actually has an answer, maybe the range of the permit, the cost of the permit and the business license, just for everybody's benefit. How much will it cost to get a short-term renter permit?
So, we kind of put it at the, if you take into account the actual short-term rental permit and the business license, you're looking at those two roughly around $250, maybe 300.
A year.
Correct.
Plus the TOT tax plus everything.
That's correct. And the TOT fluctuates depending on the number of nights.
Thank you.
All right, should we open public communication?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Since, hold on. There's so many of us. I want to hear from everyone. Someone put a five-minute limit. Can we get the clock up? Do you know how to run the clock? I probably should have told you before.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, so let's just be cognizant of each other and keep it civil, but we're gonna open, wait, let me get my notepad. All right, so now I will open public communication. Anyone wishing to address a diaston issue, please step forward. You're gonna step forward one at a time to the podium. Tell us your name and tell us the street you live on in town.
Mr. Chair, before the public speakers begin, we're just gonna keep track on our phone and we'll give them a one-minute warning.
Okay.
And then you might want to remind the audience to speak to the commission and not to the audience members.
Good point. We're not coming up making any rebuttal arguments to anyone else. You're here to speak to us. If you have questions for staff or us, let us know what the questions are. We'll try to write those down, get the answers for you. But this is a public hearing, not a public debate. So please, tell us your name and where you live.
Hi, I'm Robin Wood and I've been an El Segundo resident for almost 50 years. I bought the house across the street from my mom, who's also an Airbnb host. I live on Oak Avenue just behind the high school, near the church, the First Baptist Church, which is now New City Church. And I effectively live in a five-bedroom, three-bath home, but it's actually a four-bedroom, two-bath with a one-bedroom, one-bath casita in the back. I actually started doing Airbnb when I had a room, which is very small with a very small closet, sat empty for two months. And it was a financial hardship. And that's when I took the leap and did Airbnb. And it was the best thing that I could have done because now I have somebody in there every day and it's made a huge difference just in my household with the money. I have a high-risk pregnancy and my husband, who's a 20-year retired Marine, is in college. So the three or four hours a day that I get to work is supplemented by the Airbnb income. I have two Airbnbs in the house and I have the casita in the back. And I would say, everything has been basically positive. The majority of the guests that stay in the house are much shorter term. I see a lot of people that come in for the, like, they'll have a late flight and then another early flight the next morning and they're looking for a place to stay. Those guests typically Uber, so there's not a parking situation there. Sometimes they'll stay for a couple of days, like, there's a testing center close by, we'll get a few of those. Sometimes we'll get a parent and a child looking to scout out colleges. Occasionally, I'll get people that actually are there to vacation. In the back house, it's more longer stays. We'll get three days, a week, three weeks, something to that effect. I haven't had any trouble with any of the guests. I would say the best impact for the city would be that parking is much better now that I have Airbnb because when I used to rent everything out full-time, we would have nine cars there at a time because they would have, you know, parents would have adult children and then their friends. And I received complaints from the neighbors when I had full-time tenants. But when, as the Airbnb, I haven't had any complaints. Also, I've seen that, I put out folders where I put all the, you know, good favorite spots to go in El Segundo. So I funnel people through our town that normally, if I had a full-time tenant, they would just go to work, come home, maybe go to Ralph's and that's it. But when people are there on vacation, they go out into the city and they spend money. My biggest concerns about everything that I read was that it sounds like my current setup would not be allowed with this new regulation, which is scary for me because I can't work full-time right now. And then also the parking situation. On my street, there's no parking issues. I've, again, I've only experienced a positive impact having Airbnb because most people Uber. In the back house, there'll be one car and then me and my husband have a car. And occasionally, someone in the front, if they stay a couple of days, they will have a car. I have communicated with all of my neighbors and there have been no complaints from them. They all have my phone number. And it's been a great experience. Everything else on the list seems very ordinary and normal and expected with the regulations, with the transient tax and the business license and the permit. All of that, to me, makes sense. I just want to make sure that we focus on what the real issues have been, which in my experience has been the party house. Out of everything that I've heard about Airbnb, it's always been the party house that's the issue. And I just hope that we're not in danger of over-regulating something that doesn't need it. I think we've all done pretty good at policing ourselves for the most part and maybe we could do something a little bit lighter now and then reevaluate once the sundown date hits and see if that works. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. You're doing fine. Hi.
Hi there, I'm Carrie Bex. I know some of you. Hello. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I have been a host for over eight years. I think I have had over 4,000 visitors. I have never had a problem. I would ditto almost everything that you said. There's certain, I'm very supportive of Airbnb because of their platform, because of their values. The people that I bring into our sweet town, their grandparents, they stay for two weeks to visit their children. I think by limiting the amount of time that we can all have or they can have with their families, with the supply and the demand is really going to be difficult. I have med students that come and take their exams. I think there's three or four different places where you can take your exams. They can't afford to stay in the Marriott. They stay for one or two days with me. I have a duplex, so this will really make an impact on not just me financially, but I think the people that are in my neighborhood that we serve. And so, med students, I've had, I can't tell you how many patients, cancer patients, in vitro patients that stay for several weeks. They have their medicine delivered. They're close to a lot of the different hospitals here. I have a couple right now and their daughter is doing internship at Raytheon. And I talk to everyone, I vet them, Airbnb helps me. They have a trust, vetting, verification in safety division. I feel safe with the people with Airbnb. I would almost say if you want to limit short-term rentals, just don't limit Airbnb because they do such a good job making sure that the people are accountable, that hosts and guests are accountable. And a lot of it is the reviews. So there's a mutual review, so everyone does get a review. Some of the other, you know, as, I didn't get your name, I'm sorry, but some of the other guests that I have are travelers. They're European travelers. They're absolutely lovely. People from China, people from Japan that come here to shop. They do come here, they eat in our restaurants, they contribute to the city, to the stores, they walk on Main Street. My 4,000-plus people, I'm sure, have purchased a lot of things and a lot of food. Again, never, ever a problem. I take that back. One problem out of 4,000. Someone parked on my lawn. My neighbors all know I Airbnb. They're all supportive. They're all respectful. They love the people. They called me, they took a picture. The people were from New Zealand. And in New Zealand, they park on the front lawns. So that's the only problem. I see some problems with the issues that you gentlemen brought up. One of them is a registry. The problem I had was I was robbed, but I was not robbed by somebody from Airbnb. A criminal came in. We suspect it could have been because I sometimes on Facebook will say, oh, I'm traveling, I'm going. It puts us, everyone in jeopardy.
One minute.
...in jeopardy, thank you, if our names are posted with addresses, that they know there's a vacation rental, that there's a possibility that a lot of criminals will come into our city to possibly rob us. So I can tell you, I have never had a bad experience. It has been absolutely tremendous with all the people. Airbnb is there 24/7 to support. I'm there. I employ people that help with maid service and take care of a lot of the people that live here in El Segundo. So I would look at maybe an Uber driver. Also, parking, I certainly have enough parking, but I do have a duplex, and that will hurt my rentals. And I want to continue. I have so many regular people that come, and they look forward to being in our town. They love El Segundo. So, again, the party house, I've called-
Time is up.
...that person, and none of us are in favor of what that model is. Airbnb does not support that model. So I would just ask the committee to maybe look at a few regulations. And instead of limiting, I don't know why you would want to limit wonderful visitors that are coming here to visit their families.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I have a flyer that I want to-
You're gonna have to speak in the microphone. You can give that to the city attorney, and he'll-
I'll let you guys look at it.
Okay. But no one can hear you if you don't speak from the microphone. Just tell us your name and where you live, please.
My name is Sharon Cavan. My maiden name was Feeny. We have lived in this town for multiple years. My mother graduated in 1934. I graduated in 1961. The house I live in on California Street, I helped build 70 years ago when I was six years old. And I, my house is next door to the old Mayor Les Ballmer's house on California Street. That house is vacant, because the owners now live on a boat, and they're traveling all over. And a company is in charge of it, and it is a party house. And the police have been called several times on it. The trash has had a problem, because they have been putting the trash in the wrong containers. They have a back-converted garage that is also rented out on a part-time basis. And in the last five days, I have had five different one-night overnighters. This is what my complaint is, is there's got, you can't talk about a limit with regards to how long, but I say there needs to be a limit with regards to how short the reservation is. And we are, I have other neighbors that are here with me. We all came down. This is my first time at one of these meetings. And like I say, I'm 76 years old, and it is making me a nervous wreck. I don't know who is partying next door, and who is there, who might rob my house when I'm not home. And it's just a big concern, and it's atrocious, and something needs to be handled with it.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Elaine Keller. I live in El Segundo on Franklin Avenue. I have been an Airbnb host for just over a year. And I actually went into it with the thought I wouldn't want to ever upset my neighbors. So I screen on my ad, I screen my guests, and make it really clear that it's lights-out at 10. It's just for a place to stay. It's not for partying. And in the year I've been a host, I haven't had any issues, very similar to the other hosts that spoke. I would not personally want to live next to a house like that, so I can certainly understand that situation. But I think that situation is the polar opposite of what I do as an Airbnb host. I only offer it when I'm home, and they are upstairs. And I have delightful people from all over the world. And probably my best customer is my neighbor, whose parents drive down from Northern California, and they stay for a couple nights. And they love being right next to their kids. And the house, their kid's house, doesn't have enough bedrooms for them, so mine is perfect. And I feel like we contribute, a lot of the Airbnb hosts in El Segundo, I feel, contribute to the community from that standpoint, and as really hosting the world. I share her thoughts on that, too. We become ambassadors for the community. And I feel, I like showing off El Segundo, and I like telling people the fun things that there are to do here. And most of the people are not necessarily here to visit El Segundo. They're, have a layover at the airport. But I mean, being so close to the airport, I think we would have transient people anyway. So it's not because of Airbnb. I think it's because we live near an airport, and we live near the beach. But I haven't had any problems. The people have been delightful. There's no disruption. And I think it's a nice way for El Segundo to put a great face on to the rest of the world. And it does bring in economy on Main Street. I have made, you know, I do a restaurant reservation, or recommendation for just about every guest that stays with me. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. Stepped on her foot. It's my pregnant sister. I sent a letter on May 15, and I didn't get a reply. And then Eduardo, is this Eduardo? Eduardo, sent us an email Monday morning, and then I responded back. I go, "Oh, I sent this letter, and can you please forward it to everybody?" So I'm hoping you received it. My name's Laura Di Maria. I have a husband named George Di Maria. We've, my mom moved here in 1962, when I was a baby. But I understand the party house issue. There's a party house that's on Virginia, like, a block and a half or two blocks away from me. We have a duplex, and I'm in a situation similar to her, that I have parking for, we have a house, and we have upstairs that we can't rent out. It's not rentable to, like, a long-term person, but it works great for the Airbnb. And we have parking on our premises. We have a problem, which is an apartment building right next to us, which is not Airbnb, where the people party. I'm calling the police on Friday nights and Saturday nights at 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the morning, and they've got tons of people. And this is an apartment building. That's long-term rental people. They've got these other people just moving with their kids, and they're screaming, "Oh, my goodness." So, back to Airbnb. For the two years that we've been doing it, I've had nothing but beautiful, wonderful guests from around the world, like you, China, New Zealand, a lot of people taking the tests, a lot of people coming to see their grandkids, or their children. They're having their babies. There's weddings. There's graduations. It's just a very nice community. I have a book in there that has all the restaurants. I have the jewelry source. I've had guests buy jewelry. It's been, for me, a wonderful opportunity to meet a lot of people. And they have all, a lot of, they've all said to me, "We never knew that this town existed." They don't come for vacation. I've never had anybody come like, "Woo-hoo, this is our vacation spot. We're hanging out." They go to Disneyland. They come back at night. They go to, they take their test. It's, they don't hang out, but they have breakfast in El Segundo, and they have dinner in El Segundo. And they always thank me, and they love the slice-and-pint, because they can walk there, and they love Rock 'n' Brews. So for us, we're always home. We don't rent it when we're not home, because I want to know what's going on. I don't want to be rude or disrespectful to any of the neighbors. No one's ever complained. And people have been, "Oh, we met so-and-so. They were so nice. They were from Australia. We saw them riding the bikes." I go, "Oh, that's so great. I'm so glad they did." So for us, it's been such a positive experience. And we actually now get to get an income from an upstairs duplex that we would never get income from. And it's helping us immensely. So I hope I've covered everything. But I ditto what she says. I ditto what my sister says. And I ditto what she says. I feel bad about that house. And I do think that you should live on the premises. That is my thought process on it. And not cap the nights. That's another process, thought process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Leslie Morris. I live on Loma Vista, near Loma Vista and Grand, right before you go down to our beautiful beach. I've been an Airbnb host for, like, two and a half years now. The reason I started hosting was, I work in the film business. There was another threat of a writer's strike. I was panicking. How am I going to cover my bills? I was very nervous about it, because it's just me. It has worked out beautifully. I'd wish I'd done it sooner. I wouldn't have some of the debt I have. But be that as it may, I think it's important that you get a feel for the kind of guests we have. And everyone that has spoken so far has covered it. But I want to reiterate, it's medical students, it's family, that have family that live here in town. I've had the executive chef from DeLuca's stay with me quite frequently when he's in town. It's a lot of working professionals. I have had some guests that have come to enjoy the beach, but they're gone all day. They come back. They go to dinner in downtown. I'm a little worried about the talk about capping transactions, mainly because we do live by the airport. A lot of my guests are single-night stay. They fly in, they arrive in the evening, they go have dinner in downtown El Segundo. They come back. They go to sleep. They're out the door the next morning to catch their next flight. They've all been very respectful. I should add that I live in an HOA, so I had to get permission from the HOA to do this. I've never had a complaint, not once. When I check with my neighbors, the response is usually, "We didn't even know you had guests." I will say, the only problems we've had at our complex have been, again, renters that are long-term. And I think that's because with the Airbnb platform, there's checks and balances. When you have to review your guests, and they review you, that keeps people in check. Because if you get a bad review, you don't get accepted as a guest. I get, I don't know if this is common knowledge, but you have to send me a request to stay at my house, and then I can look at your reviews and see who you are before I accept that request. So there are checks and balances. In regards to parking, I understand why there's concerns, but I will say, 98% of my guests do not have a vehicle. They Uber, or take a Lyft, or walk, or the metro. So, anyway, again, nothing but positive, and no complaints from my neighbor. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Debbie Frolov, and I'm a resident of El Segundo and of Mammoth Lakes. And Mammoth Lakes has been doing the short-term rentals for a long, long, long time, but only recently did they have to start regulating it, and start charging TOT taxes and the permit process. So I'm listening to what you're proposing. And I have a couple of questions and just a couple of statements. I made notes as they were speaking. How often do you propose submitting the TOT tax? Mammoth does it quarterly. So once you get your permit, whether you rent however many days during that quarter or not, you have to submit a piece of paper. And they charge 13% on the total rental. What, I don't know, because I'm not here speaking as an Airbnb rental person, but often, the way I explain it, I'm a Realtor, and when I explain it to people who buy a property there, one, they have to be told whether their area, because Mammoth zones, some areas not allowed for nightly rentals, and some are. And let's just say, you like to rent your place for $100 a night, then they usually tack on the 13%, because the owner wants a certain number for their rental. And so the paperwork is submitted quarterly, whether you rent or not. And in California tenancy, 30 days or less is different than, over 30 days, you're actually a tenant. And if you do not pay any rent, or you stay a night, and there is a discussion that someone's not paying, you have to go through the eviction process. So under 30 days, you don't have to deal with that. And that's why most short-term rentals are limited to 30 days or less. It doesn't strictly say a night, two nights. I'm not here going to advocate on your question of, "How long should it be?" I'm just, again, trying to give you some background of a place that's been doing it for quite a while. The main issue is, it seems Airbnb is a wonderful site, but what I'm seeing is Mammoth, in Mammoth, is there are a lot of new, new vacation rental, short-term companies getting in the business. And I do not know for sure if they're as advocacy as Airbnb. So on maybe the con side, you can't guarantee that everyone's going to go strictly through Airbnb. There's many. And now there's personal companies starting short-term rentals within Mammoth. So I live here. I see a need, and they charge less to do the rental sites. And so these are individual companies. El Segundo and Mammoth are kind of similar. They're both very small towns. So that's a little bit of a comparison. Mammoth is really a resort town, and people do come for a weekend or just over Christmas. Just going out in town, I do meet people, airline people, business people, who do come for a short term, and no one seems to be under 30, who's looking to not have to spend the hotel rates. And I always say, I don't know anybody renting that short term right now. Oh, hang on. Back to my page. Mammoth does require that the property has to post the permit, and it has to be visible. They also, they have a lot of condos. We have a lot less here. We have more duplexes, single families. So again, a little different variations. In the permit process, Mammoth's getting better and better, and they now have a list of conditions that you have to have somebody come verify the heat, and it becomes a cost issue for the owners. But to try and-
One minute.
...get away from people that are just trying to rent and make money and be the absent landlord. And I think that's pretty much it, because they have a lot of the same conditions that are there with a few other ones. And enforcement seems to be the main issue. They decided, I think it's been about two years now, they added an anonymous link on their website for complaints. They do not show addresses or telephone numbers, pretty much for privacy issues that I think most owners do not have to, even though it's public record. You can look people up, but most people don't know how to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Steve. I'm a resident of about nine years or so here. I live on Pine Avenue. And I've been an Airbnb host for a few years. And I recently sent a letter out to everyone, and some of you responded, "Thank you so much." And I would just like to commend this group for doing their due diligence to bring up some ways to prevent problems like we've been seeing in town. So they're doing, I think what they've done is a great job of presenting a way to make it work. And I really want to commend that. I think most of it would be doable by most of the people I know that do Airbnb. They're here to comply. They're here to work with the city, to work with everybody involved to try to make it work. So I'll just echo again what other Airbnb hosts have been saying is that we're conscious of what we do. We have parking. We have restrictions. We have, we look out for our people that come in. We check. We have checks and balances. And the people that come in, they use the city. A lot of them don't stay long. They're here to go somewhere else. They want to come here often to find peace and quiet, which I've found many times. They like a quiet neighborhood. So I won't echo everything that they've said before me, but a lot of that is true. And once again, I appreciate what you've been doing, and I'm ready to comply with many of these ordinances. I would only say that capping the number of nights makes it cost prohibitive in our case, because we're there. It is a business for us, so that we can bring in extra income in a time where we live in a world where we have to seek other forms of income. In our case, we needed to put our child through college. We need it for other expenses. I'm currently out of work, so Airbnb is helping me make it, so that we can live in El Segundo. So I feel for the people that are opposed to this. I would not want that person on my street. I would do everything I would to help them, if need be, to find ways to remove them, those people. Airbnb, I understand Airbnb is, you know, looking into the matter on one of these. And they have, I appreciate that they're looking into that situation, so that if it comes up, they can remove them from Airbnb. So that if it comes up, they can remove them from Airbnb. So once again, I hope you see that everybody here is willing to comply and willing to work with you and have been doing positive things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jason Harrell, I live on Loma Vista. I've been an Airbnb host for almost three years now. I have three properties in El Segundo. One property is a townhouse, a three-level townhouse where I blocked off the bottom. And so I live on the property, and then I rent the second as an entire unit. I've been a manager at a restaurant here in El Segundo at the Tavern on Main for over five years. I recently left that employment for other opportunities. But I've been in this community, an active member for quite some time. I look around, I feel like I believe it's safe to say I'm the youngest person here. So I don't have the history of El Segundo, but I too grew up in a very small town in North Carolina. I know the value of maintaining that despite living in Los Angeles County and all the surrounding areas. I think it's important that we focus on solution. And it's difficult, because a lot of times when I'm sitting here, I'm hearing things, you know, on the board where you're not privy to all the accurate information. And so sitting down with actual Airbnb people that use the platform every single day before we make any decisions, I think is imperative. I personally only do, you have to, a minimum night of two nights. This cleans out any opportunity for someone renting it for one night and having a party. One place is a maximum of six, or two of my places are a maximum of six people, and the other is a maximum of four. By putting those maximums on my platforms, I also can regulate. I also have the neighbors that are aware, I have people that are looking. If, we can even reinstall the Ring, and I, because I know a lot of people in Airbnb communities that have the Ring so that they can track exactly how many people, so you can minimize that. It bothers me what's going on in Virginia and in this other party house because their lack of concern and negligence. We've heard all these Airbnb hosts that showed up here today, it's because like we're trying to also support ourselves, but also the community. I know for a fact that almost all of my guests stay almost a week or longer, and there are people that are relocating. You know, you have a house in El Segundo that you finally want to put that new kitchen in, but you have to, you can't live in your house for three or four weeks. They come to me, and they're able to continue their life, and their children don't have to miss school, they don't have to stay in a hotel. I mean, I, you know, I don't live near NBC Suites, but I hear the police reports all the time about police showing up. There's never been a police person showing up to my places, you know. Grandparents coming in because their newborn grandchild's going to be born in a couple of weeks. You know, what's interesting is, I probably had, I probably have close to 1,000 individual guests through my three properties a year, and I would say almost 80% of them have some tie to El Segundo, some relative or some friend, that's why they're coming here. They work at Chevron, and they want their family to be there instead of them living in the Marriott or the NBC Suites. It's really a service, and if, you know, you calculate, I do over 80% occupancy. So one person, if they average, we'll just say $50 a day for 200, you know, that, we're talking about someone that's bringing in $10,000 to $15,000 a year in revenue to this city. And the parking is the same thing. I don't believe that we should do individual parking per bedroom.
One minute.
Because I live, every place I've ever lived in, even if it's a two-bedroom, had one parking or no parking. So why does it have to be different? And just like so many people said, it's usually one car or it's, or they're Ubering. You know, and that's, I just wanted to share my experience. And also, you know, like, there's an education that needs to be, you know, about the platform. There's things that you're missing.
Jason, real quick, how did you come to the two-night minimum solution?
Because I didn't want, the people that we, I think everyone will attest, we know as soon as we get a certain message, that there's something fishy about it and that it's a party. You know, like, whether it's like, it's one guest and they're renting out my whole place that can room six people, something's wrong, and I've questioned that.
So it wasn't just for financial reasons, it was?
Well, but it was protection too. Because I don't, for me personally, I don't, because I'm not cleaning, I employ four cleaners to take care of all my places. Last year I paid them $20,000 to clean all of my places, and they live in the El Segundo area. I have an assistant, so that when I am out of town, I have somebody that's always on call, and I answer my phone. I have 100% response rate on Airbnb. Because no matter where I'm at, that's the concern, I have my phone always. Now, I'm not a sailor, so I'm not going to be in the Pacific Ocean without cell service, but I have someone already in place. And I think we're all doing our due diligence except for these party houses. And the two-night minimum, and just to like completely address that, it's because it saves me, it's better for me. Because like I said, if someone's going to rent a whole house, like Virginia, they're only going to want it for one night, you know, and they're not going to want to pay the cleaning fees and like the, you know, there's, it's cheaper if you rent multiple nights. Like I have a discount for a week, I have a discount for a month, you know. But people that are really here not to have a party, aren't going to rent three days just to have one party night. You know, so I went over my time, but.
You got a question, that's okay.
Yeah, but these are, like I said, this is a conversation that we should have, because I've watched Airbnb nightmares, and I wouldn't want Virginia, and I wouldn't want to live next to that. But I also live next to a tenant that, six o'clock in the morning every Saturday, has his kids in our garage area playing and banging, and, you know, and I sleep late on Saturdays. That's nuisance, you know. But nobody's ever complained about my Airbnbs. And even if they did, like, oh, they have a baby crying, which was actually, one person mentioned that. They had a baby crying. Well, in two weeks, they're going to be gone. If they were a permanent tenant, would we really be, like, would that be just to complain about a baby crying? You know, but now you've got, I don't have any kids, so what, like a year or two of crying might be more, you know? You can't get rid of them, you know?
16 years.
I'm still crying, so, but, like, these are things, like, they're common, any kind of complaint that is possible is a very common complaint, but it's the same with long-term. And I, the two of my places are landlords, like I have deals with. And the reason they have me there, and it's full disclosure, their properties are so clean and so well taken care of, and that's, like, I'm paying normal rent, but they allow me to do it because I never have to call them. If a refrigerator breaks, I fix it or replace it. If the carpet gets messed up, I redo the carpet. I spent $1,000 to redo the plumbing, because that's the deal that we have. And so the owners appreciate it too. I appreciate, because I actually, I'll end on this. I sold one place in El Segundo, and I was doing Airbnb, and the movers came in, and they said, "Did anyone live in here?" because it was spotless. You know, we take care of our places because it's our business, you know, it's our livelihood.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, thanks.
Well, hold on, hold on, hold on. Does anyone else want to speak? Okay, yeah, we, we got a lot of people, got a lot to say. We'll get through everybody.
Hello again. You got my lengthy email?
Yes.
Okay, I just felt like this is important.
You need to introduce yourself to everyone else.
I'm sorry, Mona Eisman, Concord. First, I want to say that this is not about one party house. This is about what we want for our community. One party house is not the, what we're doing all of this regulation for, or three-party houses. We, our community is making a decision of whether we want investors, as this gentleman is, or management agents, to run hotels, or to have our very limited, small residential area be residents in our community, living here, contributing, putting their children in schools. So I want everyone to say, yes, there is a party house problem, but this is not about a party house. This is whether we want on every street in El Segundo, one or two de facto hotels. Some have an owner present, which I hope, as you've heard, okay. Home sharing is clearly defined differently than short-term rental. Our city staff chose not to do that, that's a mistake. Home sharing is defined in Santa Monica, in cities all around the country, all where it is, and that is where the owner is present. There is no way to verify that I live in my house for six months. My husband and I are talking retired. Do you want, that is what El Segundo, the question everyone is asking, okay? Second, Mammoth Lakes, El Segundo is not Mammoth Lakes, that is a resort community. Yes, we are both small, yes, we are both charming, but we don't have skiing. Do we want to be a resort community? Palm Springs is challenged with this, Mammoth Lakes is challenged with this. I do not see the equivalency of resort communities to El Segundo. I see us as a more residential bedroom community with a tremendous workforce that is looking for a place to long-term live. Airbnb, okay, I'll just give you a quote here. Airbnb is an awesome service until the guest from hell shows up. They are not on the side of the community and the city, they are not on the side of the neighborhood. They are lovely to the folks you've heard from, they're wonderful because everyone is making money. The minute you have a problem or a challenge, Airbnb is not on the side of the city, not on the side of the neighborhood, it is on the side of, they go into hiding, they have zero liability, that is how it works. So don't have any misconception that when there's a problem, Airbnb will be there. They have been shown across the country not to be there. An eviction process. I would like an eviction process of short-term rental. If there is a problem, it could be our party house, it could be anywhere. There's a wonderful story here. I would like a way that our police can ask the people to leave. Responsible party on premise. Right now, they say, the renters, there's no responsible party. I don't know if you recall June 1st, West Covina had a, someone died, many people were injured at a party in a short-term rental. The owner was not able to be found, nor was the person who actually did the renting. The police had to go on television to ask to find someone who knew anything about this house. Responsible party and immediate, immediate action is what is needed. That can be helped if the owner is present, not if the owner is using it.
One minute.
When they're off-site, okay? The positive impact of finance, I get that on everybody's home, we're attracting investors if we do that. If someone is operating a commercial enterprise, they should be paying additional trash. I am tired of our trash cans being taken. I don't, I'm not going to subsidize someone else's income. Santa Monica is actively enforcing, as is Manhattan Beach. I don't understand why our city is so afraid of enforcement. I've seen in action that they're not very proactive at code enforcement, but other cities are taking this on, it is here to stay. So active enforcement is part of doing this, it is part of actually regulating this business. It is a reality of today, and to say we cannot enforce it is ridiculous. Other cities are doing it, Santa Monica's doing it, Manhattan Beach is doing it. Everywhere is happening, we are going against the trend, everyone. They are putting more limits, home sharing, person must be present, days limit. The way this is written, we would open it up to investors, we would open it up to every day, a hotel, a commercial enterprise, not a residence. And that is not what I think we want El Segundo and our very small, close residential community to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Come on, don't be shy.
Hi, I'm Joshua Vols, and I live in Rancho Cucamonga. So I'm the, I'm the person who comes and stays in your city, because I work within two miles of here, basically. And the drive from Rancho Cucamonga is similar to as if I lived on the East Coast. So I'm a little bit late to this meeting, but I wanted to sort of at least represent that there are, that there are people kind of like myself and kind of, the Airbnb hosts, I have kind of said, you know, there are people who are sort of using this properly, and there are people who are sort of party house style situation. The party house style thing sounds horrific to me. Normally I come and I stay during the week, and then on the weekend, I get to go back to my lovely family in Rancho Cucamonga because the drive is horrific. I generally speaking don't have any parties, but I do spend, you know, dinner money and breakfast money here in El Segundo. And I have enjoyed my stays here, which admittedly, I've been here about a month, I just started my new job. My job actually subsidizes my ability to live here because the drive is that bad. So in order to, so on some level, you could maybe make the argument that there's some job creation aspect to this, because you can at least bring in people who are like me, who have financial or other restrictions that lead them to be into other locations. I had just learned about the party house thing, because where I stay, it's just me, and I come home after a long day of work and I go to sleep, you know, dinner, obviously. You know, call the kids, obviously. But I think, I don't, from my perspective, I don't know that I want to miss out on the opportunity to work in your community and to stay in your community admittedly during the week and, you know, have to go to some other community or have to drive farther or have to waste gas, ruin the environment, you know, a number of other factors around that. And I felt like there were a lot of hosts, and I was like the only person who actually like stays in an Airbnb. I don't know if you guys have any questions for me, but basically every week I kind of sign up, and I come and I enjoy your town, and then I have to go home, obviously, because it's far away. But the, I feel like, it, so as I gather it, and again, I'm late to this party, there would be some kind of a restriction on the sort of length of, the number of times I could rent, in theory, which I'm renting basically every week for five days. So there's 52 weeks in a year. So if I, if I were to rent and the limit was 20, 25, 20? Whatever it was, do the division, 52 divided by however many that is, that's how many different Airbnbs I would have to find. I have, on some level, established a relationship with my host, and I go back, and we have a great time. He's actually a friend of mine now. So it was good to make friends in the El Segundo community. And I just wanted to kind of represent, like, the people who stay here and who probably are going to continue to stay here, because it's so close to work and it's so, so much better than driving, so much better. I think that's it, any questions?
No, but you are the first person speaking here from Rancho Cucamonga, so thank you for participating.
I came a long way.
In the public service, I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, who else wants to speak?
Good evening, my name is Gary Schmunk, I live at 415 Concord Street. I know all of you have probably seen me before at many of these meetings, as well as the city council meetings. Sorry to have to be here again. I just want to make the point that I'm completely against short-term rental in any form. I would like to double down on the letter from my neighbor and friend Jeff Shu in regard to him wanting it put on the ballot and voted in a proper way so that everybody has an opinion in this city in making this important decision about this. I just don't see how it can be possibly done appropriately by five people here and those on the city council, and then we see the repercussions and would possibly have to suffer for the trial period of one year. Don't be naive, make no mistake about this. Short-term rental is about money. Money for the person renting, they're not doing it because they enjoy it or they need a friend. They're doing it for the money. The platform is doing it for the money, okay? So this whole thing is about money, which all rolls back to the definition that the planning commission put forward in this proposal that the definition is, it's a hotel. R1 zone, which has become completely diluted and now has ADU units and possible garage rentals for living space. I really think at some point, I don't know how I could possibly legally. I really think at some point, uh, I don't know how I could possibly legally fight this to get back the R-one I bought originally. And probably the value I've lost having the horror show that is the animal house behind me. Um, and just so everybody's clear, we've passed the three-year mark of the first complaint of getting something done about that house, and it's still not done. And we have possible action taking place next month, possible, with no known resolution at this time. Okay? So just be clear, this is not a fast process to get this resolved in any form in the legal system if it goes really wrong. Okay? I really think the city and the state's being two-faced about this, uh, housing shortage. We're saying you need to build ADUs due to a housing shortage, not enough housing for regular citizens. And on the flip side, we're going to say you can short-term rental those out and suck those out of the possible living locations for people looking, looking for a long-term home. The other thing is I don't really feel, why do we feel we have to be the early adopter of, uh, the short-term rental? It's a bit like technology. Why don't we let the other cities wrestle this out and work all the bugs out? And then we'll put something together on this. I don't understand why the need, we have this need to feel like we have to say yes to this and we have to allow it. Possible marketing option is that we're the city that said no. I feel really badly that possibly some poor resident could end up with short-term rentals on every side of them and have no real regular residents next to them. And, um, I think the city's being extremely naive in that this is not going to be extraordinarily expensive beyond the cost of the permits and everything else.
One minute.
And hard, and it's going to take a very long process to regulate. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Duane Kelly. I've been at this counter probably for the last two years. I try to come every time. And every time I've been here, we've had complaints about the party house. And we've generally been like fifteen people, party house and one person for the Airbnb. Well, now we got more Airbnb, which I'm happy to see. But it appears to me that we have not done one thing to solve the party house problem. Instead of solving the party house problem, we're going to go ahead and set regulations that are going to punish Airbnb, make it difficult for us to do our job and bring money into the city. I provided a report to the council showing that just a hundred Airbnb people or hosts in about one meal a day for two people brought in over a million dollars just in our restaurants. That's bringing in a lot of money and a lot of things. But instead, I don't understand why we have to restrict the number of days. I don't understand why we have to restrict the number of bookings because I don't think that, I don't understand why. I would like to hear the answer to that. As far as responsibility, I don't think there's an Airbnb responsible person in El Segundo that doesn't always have somebody around to make sure their property is taken care of. The party houses are another story. But if you look at people that have one bedroom or two bedrooms, they're there. And when I'm not here, or I'm even, you know, I've had problems when a guest shows up and I'm not there. My neighbor is there all the time and they step up and take care of it. All of my neighbors know I'm an Airbnb host and they support it. One of the reasons they support it is because Airbnb people come and go at different times of the day and night. Nobody's going to burglarize my home or any of the homes around there because there's always people, people there supporting them. And granted, we have, I think, like a lot of people, probably fifty percent of the people that we have use Uber or Airbnb, or Lyft to come to our home, even though I provide them off-street parking. Now, a hotel, they just announced, a hotel room is about a hundred and eighty square, eighty-five square feet. My house is twelve hundred square feet at less money. I support, I can handle four people, and it's still cheaper than what you can get at a hotel. We have three or four repeat customers that come to stay with us anywhere from a week to ten days. And they do that because they have kids in town, that they can't stay with their kids, so they stay with us. And they're walking distance to their kids when they live away from the hotels. I guess that's pretty much what it is, but I think that we should not be punishing the people that are doing good things for our city.
Thank you, sir.
Name Mike Sanchez, and I live here in El Segundo. Uh, four fourteen to be exact on Virginia Street, next to the party house. You know, all these success stories for Airbnb, great for these people. That's really nice. But for party houses like that, going by these little rules here that seem very minor, paying two hundred and fifty dollars for a permit that lasts you a year when they make in excess of five hundred dollars a night. We've had a hundred and fifty different people at that house in one year, staying two, three days. Uh, it's, it's pretty much ridiculous. They're renting out the back, uh, garage, which you've probably heard of already. They're throwing feces on, in the alley and urine bags they just throw out. And they, they've got more than enough trashcans and they're not in their property. They're behind my property. They're behind the neighbor's property. They've disrupted the lives of too deep, all the way around that house. Maybe it ought to be separated from regular Airbnb with people that own these homes and don't live here. Having a phone number of a responsible party is a little naive, I think. You can call that number, maybe they won't answer. Maybe somebody else, uh, this, it's ridiculous. Maybe it's got to be separated. Something's got to be done. You know, I'm not faulting these people Airbnb, that's great. But for neighbors like us, it doesn't work. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, uh, my name is Stefan. So I moved here actually from New York City in October for a job in, in solar industry. I live in El Segundo. I live on Imperial and Center. Um, and, you know, I have an apartment that I, I travel for work probably almost every week, three, four days out of the week. I'm, I'm always in a different state, but our, our main office is here in El Segundo. But when I'm gone, I rent out my apartment on, on Airbnb. And for example, Josh is one of my guests. I actually brought him, the outsider in El Segundo. But, um, you know, it is to me, one thing about money, but I don't use the money to profit. Um, I use the money to pay off my school loans. Like I have sixty thousand dollars in school loans that I owe, and it's one of the easiest ways for me to help kind of pay that, pay that off really quickly. I mean, and I get like the party houses and all that. I, I totally understand that. That's horrible and, you know, people that come here just to party is not, it's not, it's not good for the community and I absolutely agree with that. But majority of us rent one or two bedrooms, um, on Airbnb or VRBO, whatever host, whatever platform we use. And we only have, you know, two or three, four guests at a time staying there that are enjoying the community, they're traveling or working here like Josh is, or just coming here for a labor, layover in LAX. So it's, I mean, it's beneficial for me just because I can use that to support my school loans and use that money to, to, that goes to that. But it's also, you know, a benefit to people like Josh to come here and if they're working here, they just want to explore L.A., it's a benefit to them as well.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Nathan Meyer. Live on California Street, next to another wonderful party home. I guess I came here tonight, wanted to support our community, our little block that we live on, because we are dealing with this. Listening to everything here is educational for myself as well, but I think it's, what I see maybe missing in this is a couple of things. One question I would ask is, what is the benefited profit from this process that we would take in from the TOTs, the fees and everything else? So what does the community get as an income stream? Because clearly this is about money. So what do we get from it? Because I'd really like to understand that piece. And two, the concern I have is enforcement. I'm hearing it as a repetitive theme. One, we can't enforce any of the rules that exist now, from my understanding. If I'm wrong, please correct me. Short-term rentals are not allowed. Is this correct? Can we answer? No, yes?
I'll respond at the end of public. I'm taking notes, so I'll try to get to your questions.
My understanding, it's not allowed, but it's going on and we cannot stop it. So I don't understand how we are going to build a mechanism to enforce when there are faults in this. And there's clearly going to be examples when this happens and it impacts the community. And I'm not sure, I'm, I'm hearing your comments as well. How do we truly enforce this? How do we truly make accountable? What is the money we're supposed to take in? How are we using this money? Are we getting the information? I have a lot of reservations that this process is going to be able to solve that for us. And, and that's truly what I am concerned about. The last thing I would ask for any of these processes is how does a community like ourself get information on how we communicate back to you on this pilot program? Right now, the burden is on me to understand, how do I complain about a completely terrible situation? I called, what, VRBO? They tell me to call the property manager. They tell me to call the owner. I called the police and my, you know, this is a cost that the community will suck up because we don't have a way to formally document and push this through. So do we just call the police every time something's not in permit, right? They're not supposed to be doing this. It's over their permit limits. It's the number of days. Is that burden on the community to solve? Does the burden go to the city? How do you enforce it? How do you staff that? I think there's a lot of things in there we should be very careful of. And, and listening to this thing, I, I, I don't know if this is solving the problem. I was very surprised to hear that there's a very clear definition between short-term rentals and home sharing. And it sounds like there's definitely a happy medium between these things that could help everybody. And it, it does not sound like this is there. The last thing I would, would ask is, I, I definitely understand the gentleman's thing of making this a vote, but I would very much like to make sure that if this is the current bill, that it's probably modified to echo everybody. Because once it becomes into this law, how are we going to change this if it's, if it's not there? So I, I'm a little hesitant to make it a permanent law. I like this pilot process very much so we can learn from it. I do think there's an educational piece from that that is important before it just becomes policy. Changing policy once it's established, very challenging from my understanding and experience. And I think that we should be very cautious to enacting rules and laws without having a full understanding of this impact. Um, but I would very much like to eliminate, and I think everyone here is on the same page, how do we stop these detrimental community houses from ruining people's lives? I have children. I tell them, don't go outside at this hour. They walk by school. Don't ignore the guy drunk on the patio. I know that smells like a skunk. It's probably a dead skunk in the corner. These are things that we have to talk to our children about. I mean, I'm, I'm being honest, guys. I'm not trying to be, this is real life. Like, we have to talk to our kids about when there's people over there, don't go over there. Don't go play in the street. Because we don't know who they are. We don't know when they're supposed to be there. We don't know who the cars are. We don't know what's going on. So we really lose that community feel. I think there's a smart way to solve this issue without punishing other people who are doing this for the right reasons. And I guess that's all I have to say. And I don't think, from what I've heard, from hearing from everybody here, this is going to solve that. That's the only thing I would say.
Thank you.
My name is Christine Beck. I live on Concord Street. Um, we are affected by the party house, and I just have a couple of questions. How are we going to enforce all these new regulations? Okay, it's great to have everything on paper. It seems like the party, I mean, all the Airbnbs, you know, they get due process. I don't get due process. I have a motorhome. It's harder for me to park my motorhome in front of my house because I have to have all these permits overnight than the party houses and the Airbnbs and so on and so forth. So my one question, my two questions are, um, are there going to be, um, how are you going to enforce it? Are there any monetary repercussions for non-compliance, non-compliance? Because if I don't put this little permit in my window to park my motorhome, then I get a ticket. Okay? And I don't know how much I have to pay because I'm very good about, you know, um, you know, getting my permit. But, um, six, and it's forty-five dollars if I leave my car in front of my house on street, street, uh, cleaning day. How are we going to enforce it? I pay taxes, a lot of taxes for my house. These people, especially the party house, she makes a fortune. A fortune. And she doesn't mind paying seventy-five hundred dollar fine or whatever it is. But my biggest concern is, is there going to be monetary compensation for the people that do not follow the rules? And I want to know how it's going to be enforced. I don't want to have to go looking in somebody's window to see how many people they have living there. Anyway.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment?
Hi, my name is Kathy Wishard, and I live on Concord. Um, I have a question about the Coastal Commission. Recently, it's come to light that if cities have, um, banned, uh, all right, let me pull up my article here. If cities have regulated, um, STRs, short-term rentals, um, that, and later want to make changes to limit them, if they've allowed them and then they want to make changes to limit them, that the Coastal Commission steps in and does the regulating and doesn't allow them to, to make restrictions when they've allowed them. Have you considered that if this pilot program doesn't work and we want to make limitations in them, um, that we're going to have to answer to the Coastal Commission? And that the control will be taken out of our local government's hands? That's what I have to say. And the Coastal Commission is a nightmare.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gino Venney. I live on California Street. I've been here enough that I think you guys probably know my position. I just want to reiterate and, uh, register my risk, my disapproval or my, um, objection to short-term rentals. I think what I learned at the last meeting was very encouraging. I learned that there was a separation. There is home sharing and there is short-term rentals. Home sharing, I think, is very reasonable. I think it fits in the community well. Because there's someone there at the home or the house to regulate it, short-term rentals do not require anyone to be there. And let's face it, when no one is home, people are going to go to have fun. Whether it's, and it doesn't have to be a party house. Some people call the place next to us a party house. It has a lot of parties. It also has a lot of just simple Airbnb rentals. It's still kids from morning till evening, partying in the pool, youngsters screaming and yelling and making noise and racket. Or it's parties, and I mean bachelor parties, bachelorette parties, graduation parties, um, weddings, all sorts of things. It's a community. It's a residential district. I moved into this community over twenty years ago. I moved in because it was a nice, peaceful, quiet, Mayberry by the sea. If we open this up to rentals, it is not going to be that. It's going to change. We don't know who's renting. We don't know who's living there. We have had incidents where we've called the host. Well, call the police. My response is, hey, aren't you running this show? Why don't you call the police? No, they don't want to take on that responsibility. Neither do I as a resident. I don't want to be the guy standing out in front of the street when the cops pull up and go, where's the issue? And then have the people around the corner decide, that's the house we should screw with this week. You're putting the onus on the residents to police this city. You're putting the onus on the residents to police this city. And I think that's wrong as well. So those are my reasons for objecting to the short-term rentals. I think house sharing or home sharing, more than reasonable, open it up. I trust our residents to do the right thing. I don't trust the people who don't want to be in the house with their guests. That's it.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Leila Shu. I live on Concord, four hundredth Street, uh, four hundred block Concord Street. And I'm not talking about the party house, even if I live right behind it. And my life and my family's life is basically ruined with that house. But that's another issue. I absolutely oppose the short-term rentals, because it will never, ever work in this town, city. This is not a resort town. And kudos for people who are hosting these wonderful guests from all over the world. I, I understand. I've used Airbnb in different countries. But we have a housing shortage in this city. And some people have three homes. They don't live here. San Francisco, San Diego, Cardina. All kinds of people are buying properties here and renting them, because they can't do it in some other places. A lot of these people here even are advertising that, "Oh, it's a great, it's very close to Santa Monica and Manhattan Beach and et cetera, et cetera." People don't stay here. They come here and stay here, but what is the city getting from this? You not, I read your agenda. It says hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars a year for the, whatever, TOT. What is that going to be? That's not even enough for the, whatever company who is going to monitor this. Who is going to pay for the extra personnel who has to monitor this? Or is it me again? Already complaining, too many police calls. And I will call more. And the police doesn't even respond anymore. How much more weed smoke do we have to inhale? How much more cars and different people have to walk through there that we don't know who is here? I'd rather have the babies crying and the children playing six o'clock in the morning and banging my garage. I love, I miss that. We're going to lose all that. Did you guys know that when the people buy the houses and rent them for Airbnb, we lose the kids? We lose the parents. We lose the families. Schools are not having children soon. We already, this was the first year that we have less students going to the, whatever, first grade. I mean, my kids grew up here. We've had our house twenty-five years and there's no day going now or weekend that we don't think that we got to get the hell out of here. But I don't want to leave. I love this town. I have hardship, my husband, my family. I don't need to have an Airbnb to support us. I'm a nurse. I don't make million dollars. My husband worked for Raytheon. But we live so that we save. We don't need to get money from some people to come and ruin the town at the same time. You can do it. Every family has hardship, but Airbnb is not the response. My son was in a car accident, had a brain injury. I have, I'm a cancer survivor. My husband had a heart attack. And boo hoo, yes, every family has that. But life goes on. It's good. It's positive. But I, I moved here because this was a good town, good schools. But what's happening now is not good. And people who run the Airbnbs, there are other businesses they can do. This, get some money some, some other way. I don't know, but ruining this town is not the way.
One minute.
And the city, it's going to be so expensive. How are you going to enforce it? We've been trying to deal with this problem, what we have on four-sixteen Virginia, over, uh, it's almost over four years now. And there's no sign on an end. I mean, what are you going to do when, when there is a party house? And every single Airbnb is a, can be a possible party house. Rents go up, property values go down. When are we going to have to say and then close that, "Yeah, that is, if you, if I'm selling my house, there's a going to be clause that I have to tell the possible buyer that, well, yeah, there is an Airbnb next to me and behind me and then a block away from me." I don't want it to get to that.
Time's up.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Joanne Kelly, and I'm an Airbnb host. I agree with most of what's been said from the other hosts here. My husband really described our situation pretty well. We have a beautiful house that we love. We've lived here a long time. And it's such that we can close the hall door and have the back part of the house be entered through its own private entrance. Since our kids were raised and moved away, that stays empty most of the time. And while we don't need the money, we do use the money to put back into the property. We've been able to put solar panels on our roof. We keep the landscaping up. We make improvements in the neighborhood that we otherwise would struggle to do. So while we don't do it for the money, really, because we enjoy so much the people, and much as what everyone else has said here, some of our people that rent our place will remark and say, "This, your, your neighbors are so friendly. They always say good morning to us when we're leaving and they smile." And so that tells us that there's not really an objection, at least in our neighborhood, to what we're doing. We do rent, have a two-night minimum. We do that for two reasons. One is we don't want to have to just take care of it after just somebody's in there one night. It's a little bit too much work. We usually take care of it ourselves, although we have a cleaning lady that we can use if we need to. And it's worked out much better. Since we've had the two-night minimum, we get three and four and five nights many times, rather than the two nights. And when we go away on vacation, which we just went for three weeks, we were able to rent the Airbnb with the help of our cleaning lady and our neighbors for three different stays while we were gone. And everything worked beautifully. Everyone enjoyed it. We felt comfortable that it was being taken care of. Our neighbors have our phone number, would let us know immediately if there was anything wrong. And we have people here that are willing to help us and take care of any problems that come up. I don't understand why the party house thing has not been solved by now. We had a neighbor that was, that was a long-term neighbor for a long time, who had parties and all kinds of things. That was a nuisance, and I wished it had been a party house so that it would have gone away. But we had to put up with it. And I think neighbors are that way. Any house you buy, you can get somebody as a next-door neighbor that's going to drive you crazy. It's, it's a risk. We do vet our, our guests. We have on occasion seen a bad review and told the people, "Sorry, because of your bad review, we cannot accept you in our, in our home." And that works great, because people do know that if they're going to get a bad review, the next place they try to rent are going to be hesitant to do that. Now, that wouldn't affect the party houses, because the corporations who are buying the houses and making them party houses don't really care. So that's, that's not an answer to that problem. I would, with these regulations, I really do not want our personal address put online for anybody to know where we live. For just anybody that's even not renting our home. Once they're in our home and I've accepted them, that's one thing. But, but not to have it available for other people to, to have that information ahead of time. Airbnb has been perfect for us. We only use Airbnb. We don't use any other short-term rental agencies, because Airbnb has been there to support us in any situation that we've had. And we have not had any problems, any damage, and we have many, many repeat customers. So other than that, I would just verify that everything else the hosts have said,
One minute.
we agree with totally. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Craig Cleary, and I live on California Street. And I grew up in this community. I've worked for the city. And I've lived on the same block for about fifty-five years. And when I purchased my house, it was across the street from where I grew up, same street. I couldn't afford it. I didn't make enough money, but I found a way to get by. Now, currently, I live next to a hotel, to be quite frank. There's people coming and going every day, day and night. And it's unnerving, because you don't know who these people are. Cars are coming, you know, they come and they go. The people that come and, and short-term rent these places have people coming from who knows where and parking on the streets and visiting. Yeah, it's, it's about a party house, but it's also just about, I don't even recognize the block anymore. I mean, there's people partying. There's people on the roof. There's people jumping off walls into the pool. And, you know, when you say, "Well, call the police, they'll solve the problem," that's not realistic. Been there and done that. We've got people that, that basically, you know, how do you call the police at eleven or twelve at night when they're leaving the party and they're urinating on your, on your parkway or squatting in the street? By the time you call and they get there, they're gone. So the quality of life is diminished on that block based on short-term rental. And I understand the hosts. I get it. I've been there as far as being a property owner with an investment to try and make ends meet, but I rented it. I knew who was there. I had kept an eye on it. I was responsible for it, just as they are. But these homes where there's nobody in it and it's just a party house, they pack their bags and leave. Next couple hours, the next group comes in. Cars park up and down the street carrying their, their booze in, and it's going to be another party. I mean, it's just, to me, I don't understand, I don't even recognize, like I said, this community, that block in which I live in, this community is not the same. And that bothers me. I have elderly parents that are, that are living with me now. I'm taking care of them. And quite frankly, I'm so fed up. Like I said, I, I lived in this town, worked in this town. This town means everything to me. But I, I, if my parents weren't living there, I'd be out of here, because I can't handle it anymore. I'm fed up with it. I'm not complaining to you. I'm just telling you how it is. When you sit here and say, "I hear these people saying, 'Oh, yeah, a party house. That's horrible.'" But let me tell you how nice my situation is. But you're not living on that day after day, night after night, wondering who's next? And who is that? And what are they doing, urinating on my yard? I get up the next day and I got to pick up, uh, drink, you know, plastic cups with booze and trash and stuff, because, you know, the animal house next door had a party. I'm just fed up. And I'll just leave it at that. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else who hasn't already spoken? It's okay. You're not in trouble. We still have one more here.
The, the party house does have to be resolved, okay? There's, there's no doubt in my mind. But I, I,
You have to tell us your name.
My name is Bob. I live on Eucalyptus. I'm an aerospace engineer. I'm probably not as eloquent a speaker as a lot of others here, so I have a lot of notes here. I don't know if I can even read them. I've been fifteen years in El Segundo. I have two children going through the El Segundo School District. One of them is going to college next year. So definitely, it's, it's not just, "I like the people I rent to," but I, I, I need the income, okay? We need the income to survive here, okay? I've been renting short-term rental for about a year. I host on my own property. I have a one-bedroom ADU, but I'm there all the time, because I work in El Segundo also, okay? Haven't ever had really any noise or parking issues with my guests. About half my guests are, are, have cars. The other half use other transportation to get around here. We talk about it being a quiet residential community, and it is. And that's why people like to stay here. But it's also a business community. I don't know the exact numbers, but we probably have twice as many people coming in for work and business than there are residents in here. I know the company I work for has three thousand or four thousand people come in every day to do work, okay? And that's about a quarter, I think, of your population here, okay? But what I did do, because I am an engineer, I did do a, a little bit of, of calculations here on the types of guests we have here. And basically, my guests stay from two, two, two nights to four weeks, two-night minimum also. It's just not worth my time to turn around. I do employ a family of housekeepers to come in every time there's a change. And there's probably five to ten changes a, a month that they take care of, okay? I kind of surveyed the first thirty-six or so, thirty-five guests, and it came, it broke down to this. Thirty-five percent of them came to visit families, came to visit children, grandchildren, and also parents. And, and that's what we want in our community. That's part of our community, is for our children to come visit us and for us to go visit our parents. And that's, that's, that's really part of what we're doing here. They wouldn't have a place to stay otherwise. They're not going to stay in a hotel. Six percent are, are come from, right from El Segundo, people who are remodeling and fumigating their homes, that need a place to stay, okay? Nine percent come for sports, either volleyball tournaments or hockey. I've had hockey players, famous hockey players come by, come to stay. Six percent are college, visiting colleges or graduating. Thirteen percent come from work or medical reasons. Either they're going to see a specialized doctor, or they're coming to stay for work for a few days. And maybe about thirty percent are tourists, but about half of those are international tourists. People that we actually want to attract, people that are good people from other countries that have come to see Los Angeles and want to stay and use our community as their, their launch ground for their visit and also to, to spend their money here, okay? Their international money. So in general, what I, I, it's, it's all positive. Limiting the number of days, I don't see any reason for that. You're going to be making money anyway. That number of a hundred and ten thousand dollars of income sounds really low. I did a rough calculation, and it's closer to half a million dollars
One minute.
of TOT, okay? And I, we shouldn't let a, a bad apple or bad apples to spoil what is something good for our community. And we should just enforce the rules and, and get, get the bad apples out of here, okay? And I, I think that's probably most of what I want to say. So I, you know, it's, it's been a good thing for us.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? No? Okay. You had a question, Mr. Meyer? Quickly, go to the podium.
Sorry, Nathan Meyer, California Street again. Yes, just two questions. One was, I, I'm sorry I didn't read through all this, but I guess my questions would be, are we going to be limiting the total number of permits that will be issued for short-term rentals if this goes through? Secondly, do we have any impact studies on what the growth rate or current state is? What percentage of current occupancies are short-term rentals today? Do we have any baseline understanding of where we are? And what we would say is a tolerable level potentially in a future state, knowing how this is growing? Those are the only two questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
One thing I forgot to mention is, if I understand it right, if we have one, one complaint about noise, we automatically lose our capability of doing it. Is that correct?
No.
Okay, then I misunderstood it.
Okay. Short. Trying to appreciate that.
In the code, there is no addressing the trash issue. Someone is operating a commercial enterprise and paying residential tax fees, and I'm already contributing my life to this other person's income. I would like also not to contribute my trash cans. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone who has not spoken? Okay. You, you have to come to the podium. One last question. You have to come to the podium. One last question.
The trash was in here.
This has been bothering me a lot. When we talk about the principal residence of the owner, be the owner or whatever. But what comes after that covers basically everything, so it doesn't have to be, can be anybody. Could be my dog, basically. What it says here that, "If the owner of the dwelling unit is not a natural person or a trust, the person who claims the dwelling unit as his or her, principal residence must be a shareholder member." How do you define the member? Could be somebody working, cleaning lady?
That's not what it means, but I thank you for your question.
Well, but it goes on. "Or partner of the corporation, limited liability company partnership of joint venture that owns the dwelling unit." So this is going beyond owner-occupied. This is like, welcome all the businesses that are already buying the residences here. Totally against that.
Thank you. All right, anyone else who has not spoken who wants to say anything? Seeing no one, I will now close public communication. I wanna thank you all for participating. I wanna thank you for the emails. I'm a big proponent of public communication, especially on something like this that is so important and is affecting so many people. Ultimately, you know, our job as planning commission is to have this public hearing, to have this process so that everyone, A, gets notice of what the city is doing, B, gets an opportunity to participate in the governance of this. And then what we do is make a recommendation to the city council, who ultimately will decide what the details are, the nuts and bolts, yes or no. So, thank you all for your comments. And when it gets to city council, do we know, Sam, when this is gonna go to city council? Or we have to wait to see what happens?
Yeah, I'd like to see what happens before we set the date.
Fair enough. The point is, ultimately, it is your city council elected official members who will be deciding this issue. But your input and your participation here is greatly appreciated. Now, before we start our talk, let me try to address some of the questions raised. Who wants to talk about the enforcement and the party house regulations? Does someone have a quick breakdown of that that they can give? What happened to our officer? Okay, I don't wanna put him on the spot because... That's okay, you've got a real job too. Tell us your name, please.
Dan Kim.
Okay, you've been present in this hearing. Thank you very much, Mr. Kim, for being here. You've heard the conversations and the exasperation of those residents who live next to party houses, correct?
Correct.
And I've heard comments, "It doesn't do any good to call the police," and that concerns me because I think if there is a nuisance, then everyone should be calling the police all the time. Now, we do have this new party house ordinance in effect in town, correct?
The loud and unruly gathering ordinance?
Yes.
Yes.
And that came into effect maybe a year, two years ago?
That's probably, probably two, roughly.
A year. It came into effect a year ago. That's a good point. Because there were comments about, "I've been living with this situation for four years." And it came to fruition, we learned about it talking about short-term rentals because these party houses were short-term rentals and they were the worst offenders. And I think it was Sam who said, "Look, we're talking about two different things. We're talking about short-term rentals and then we're talking about these obnoxious party houses." And so what the city did was kind of divide the two issues and fast-tracked this, what's it called? Unruly party?
Loud and unruly gathering ordinance, LUGO. I often call it just LUGO as an acronym.
LUGO. Loud and orderly party houses. So, we passed this ordinance for the express purpose of getting party houses out of our community, right? Most people who home-share or have an Airbnb, you don't even know if there's not a problem. But when there's a problem, it turns out it's a terrible problem. And it pains me to see people who have lived here and grown up here feel like this is not even their town anymore because they got a bunch of jerks next door, all right? So, once the city was able to pass that ordinance, they were actually able to enforce that ordinance. And they have started to do so at a house on Virginia. Now, I am flanked by two city attorneys. And they're looking very concerned right now because there's an ongoing investigation. And they told me not to ask so many questions about it, but guess what? I don't have to. Because I have the first amended misdemeanor complaint against a property owner for unduly ordinances. And what this is, is a criminal enforcement action which has eleven counts of violations of the El Segundo Municipal Code. And this, I believe, where's my printout of the court docket? That's very dramatic, thank you. Pulling off the public records, so I'm not getting in trouble with the city attorneys because everyone has access to public court records and court documents, and that's all we're talking about. This enforcement action is going to trial on July 16, 2019. So it has been a very long and very frustrating road. But when we first learned about it, we didn't have the tools to combat what the issue was, which was obnoxious people having parties and annoying their neighbors. So, for the people who are up here and they're dealing with these types of situations, I implore you to call the police. Let them use the tools the city has given them to enforce and crack down on these situations. Real quick, I became familiar with this being enacted. I was at a forty-year-old birthday party in town and the cops came. And we didn't believe it because we're all super old, you know? Why are the cops coming? But they did, and they told us to turn it down, and we ought to turn it down. And they're like, "If we come back, here's what's gonna happen." You know, "If we have to come back again, you're gonna get fined." "If we have to come back again," and we all felt like high school kids. But that's the reality of the fact that, in my experience, being at a party, I've seen it be enforced. But if the people who are being affected don't call the police and we don't have that record, then we're not gonna be able to document. This type of action takes so much evidence and so much documentation that it's really implicit on people to let the police know so that they can do their job. And once the police do their job, the city attorneys can do their job, and hopefully we can get rid of these obnoxious party houses. And they're subject to penalties and fines. And I believe there's even a potential of a prison sentence of six months. So, the city, yes, like all governments, moves painstakingly slow. But I do wanna commend staff for saying, "Look, the big problem here are the party houses. Let's deal with that first. Let's get that to city council, and then we can decide what we wanna do about short-term rentals." We've had plenty of hearings on this. We've had a lot of input from people, good and bad. And I think that everyone would agree that as long as someone's using their property, whether it be Airbnb, short-term, long-term, or whatever, and you're not disturbing your neighbors, that's your property right, right? It's kind of like, you know, I've got a First Amendment right to swing my arms around and be expressive, but as soon as I cross into your own personal, private space, that's no good anymore. So you can use your property unless it's a nuisance to your neighbor's properties. And that's what the party house ordinance was designed to do. And I'm glad and happy to see that our city attorneys are taking people to task and enforcing this. And hopefully this will be an example so it doesn't happen anymore. But if you're on California and it's happening or you're in a house, let the police know. Let them do their job. We'll build a case and we'll get these people out of town, okay? That being said, thank you for showing up. And if anyone here who has complaints wants to talk to an officer and tell them your story, do so right now. And all I ask is, you should know by now, because I know, where the problem houses are. So if a complaint is called, you know, maybe you send a cop out there and he just sits outside. You know, maybe we spend, I'm not trying to tell you how to do your job. I'm just saying, I am distressed to hear how upset people are about the same thing happening over and over. And I am pained to hear people say, "City doesn't do anything," so...
Well, if I could, I would echo your concerns. Number one, it is unfortunate when these loud parties do happen, whether it's a short-term rental or just a regular house. It can be disturbing. We do want people to call us when there is a problem. One of the things we pride ourselves on in El Segundo is, you know, no call too small. Hey, if something is going on, please give us a call. We will show up and assess what is going on. So, when there's something is wrong or if you feel like something is not right and you resident, what have you, please call us. We will come.
Thank you. I agree wholeheartedly. And thank you for your service to the city.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Now, let me see if I can ask staff some questions that came up. And if I've missed any, let me know, guys. I tried to write them down. Limit on number of permits? I don't think we're proposing any limit on the number of people who can ask for this type of permit, correct? Okay.
Can we talk about that?
We can.
Okay.
But I'm just trying to lay what's in the proposal now.
Okay.
Someone asked about how much money does the city get? And the TOT tax is what, nine percent, 10 percent?
Twelve percent.
Twelve percent. So transit occupancy tax is the same tax you pay at a hotel. It's 12 percent. I think we voted to raise that recently, a couple of years ago. It's transient if it's thirty days or less. So if you're Airbnb-ing anything for thirty days and less, then you pay TOT. If you're renting out an apartment to a roommate for a month or two months or three months, anything over, there's no TOT because it's just a regular roommate situation. We, okay. I can't answer questions. I'll answer your question, but I can't have people just... That's okay. You're not in trouble. I love participation. You've gotta keep the train on the tracks here. Since there is no regulation, so here's the deal. You've heard people say, "I've been doing this four years. I've been doing this five years." It's happening right now. It's completely unregulated. Anyone can do it, and there's no way to enforce it. So the idea that came to the city was, "Let's set up a permitting process. Let's regulate this. Let's let the people who are doing it correctly do it correctly so that we know who you are. We have a contact number if there's a problem, and we start collecting the TOT tax." So up to now, there's been no collection of TOT tax because there's been no regulation. And people are just doing it through Airbnb or HomeStay or whatever it is. So we don't have any past numbers. We can only figure out what the future numbers are. But again, we don't have any understanding how many people are doing this right now because there's no permitting system. And the idea with the permitting system is, identify who it is, give them a permit, and then if you get two noise citations, then when you renew your permit, you may not get renewed. But then as far as the, if you violate the party ordinance and it goes to a full citation, then that's the immediate revocation of your permit. Is that accurate?
There's two violations of any of the conditions.
Right.
Or one of the unruly, loud gathering.
Okay. So, all these conditions that we're gonna talk about and decide, and the city council almost will decide, if you go six months or you go a year, let me back up. This is a pilot program for a year. These permits will only be issued for a year at a time. So if you go a year and you don't have any problems or any issues, you get another permit. If you go a year and you come back in and you have two issues, violations of the ordinance, whatever it is, then you may not get that permit. If within that year, any time in that year, you get cited and convicted of the unruly party house ordinance, you immediately lose that right. It's taken away from you. You're not allowed to be a host anymore at Airbnb. So again, the idea is, we can't wrap our arms around it and regulate it unless we permit it through an application process. And once we do, then we can weed out the good folks from the bad folks, which is what we all want, right? We all live in this town for the same reason, because we love this town. And we're trying to figure out a way to make this work in our community so it works for all of us, all right? Now, let me get back on the line here. The big question was, how do we enforce this once we put it up, right? And again, I think it's gonna be, depending on what the violation is of the host, right? So if someone, like I said, if you go that year and you're getting complaints about noise or you're getting complaints, then you're gonna eventually lose your right to do it. But as far as enforcement, who's got a good idea how to explain how any of the city municipal codes are enforced? It's all basically someone bringing it to the city's attention, right? I mean, like the building code, you don't have people going around checking random building codes.
It'll be complaint-driven. Like, one example is, it has a requirement that the trash needs to be orderly and taken care of and whatnot. And if we get a complaint, we go out there and we visually see the trash is not taken care of, that would be a violation. And they would be, a citation would be written. And if two of those happened, then they would lose their license.
Thank you for bringing that up. I did read in here there was something about maintaining trash as one of the conditions. Can someone point that out? What page we're on?
Number five on page five.
You know, this is not bait stamp, so you're kind of... Did you find it? Oh, thank you. All right. "The property of the short-term rental shall be maintained in a clean and sanitary condition. Trash and refuse shall not be left outdoors and shall not be left stored within public view except in proper containers for the purpose of collection. The owner must contract the city's exclusive residential solid waste provider to ensure all receptacles," blah, blah, blah. So again, if someone's totally quiet but they're leaving trash all over, you call the police? You call the city, actually.
You would call code enforcement during regular work hours. And then on Friday evenings and weekends, you would call the police.
Okay. And again, you have to call the police so they can come document, and there's your one strike for trash. Maybe the next one's for noise.
Can I ask a follow-up enforceability question? So, there's a process if you have a permit, but what about anybody who attempts to rent without a permit? Is there some sort of a mechanism, a fine in place?
That would be treated essentially the way it's treated today if you were enforcing the law. It's against, it's not lawful to make a short-term rental available in the city today. So they would be cited for that as a violation. It's without a permit. Just under Chapter Two, just as contemplated in this draft ordinance. Same procedure, citation.
Sorry, can you repeat that so I can, you know, do you short-term rentals that are happening today are in violation? We should be calling the police every day?
We can't, we can't open up public communication, guys. I closed public communication. I was exceedingly patient. We're gonna ask questions that we heard from the public to staff. And we're gonna try to do the best we can, but we can't just start asking questions. I know, I know. We are going to keep this meeting on the agenda. Thank you all for your comments, but again, just don't interrupt anymore, please. Please, let's have respect and decorum here. Thank you.
Your question is about the operation of a short-term rental. If this ordinance is in place, if somebody operates a short-term rental without a permit?
Correct.
Right, then you'd be operating a use that's not permitted in your zone. And today, there'd be three different options essentially. One is an administrative citation that carries with it a fine. It's also a crime to violate any provision of the municipal code, so it could be punished criminally with a criminal complaint like Ryan alluded to with the party house. And also, if you are maintaining a public nuisance, a civil action in court is the third option. So there are three different enforcement mechanisms.
Thank you.
Well, maybe the big question is, how do you know if someone's not registered on a platform? Or, you know, if there's a dozen platforms out there and we're just watching Airbnb and VRBO, how do we know if someone is violating or is not registered?
Complaint-driven, you just said. That's the only way.
So that's it. So you've gotta just, so you need to know that your neighbor is registered, I guess, and...
I mean, in the same way that if you live in a residential neighborhood and your neighborhood, neighbor is working on cars for money, right? Then you could call, I guess, code enforcement and say, "There's a commercial use next to my..."
Right.
"In the R1 zone."
Okay, all right. Right, in general, there are no commercial activities allowed in R1. Doesn't mean you can't work from home, but it means we don't want auto shops in R1s. We don't want people having businesses in R1s. Which brings me to another point. So in Googling all these different cities and all their different restrictions, you know, Google always knows what we do. So I get this advertisement, something called neighborhood.com, which wants to be the Airbnb of personal storage, which means you can rent out your garage to someone else to put their crap in your garage. That is not allowed now under the code because that's a commercial enterprise that is not allowed in the R1, R2, R3 zones. But I am going to ask to modify this short-term rental so that we make it expressly clear that you're not allowed to rent out your garage to house someone else's junk. Because it doesn't matter what we're talking about, parking is always an issue. I had a spot for that.
So Ryan, how, how, how are we going to have that discussion between, um, a for-profit room rental, house rental environment? How are we going to have that discussion?
What do you mean?
Versus not being able to rent out your garage?
Well, we have, um, it says, "A short-term rental," this is page 10, item 10, "is for overnight lodging accommodations only, and may not be used for, or advertised for weddings, parties, bachelor bachelorettes, conferences, or similar events. The owner should sponsor for the content of all advertising with respect to short-term rental properties."
Couldn't the argument be made, though? It could be made.
What?
That they're, that, that they're being used as a hotel would be used, because they certainly are taking hotel business away.
The short-term rentals?
Sure.
Yeah.
So that's very much the same argument.
No, my concern is that we're losing a parking space because someone's going to make a hundred bucks a month renting out their garage.
No, you wanted to add the part, yeah, well...
That's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
And I thought you said, "may not be used."
Okay.
There's a difference between, um, using an R1 for lodging in a short-term capacity and using it for commercial storage of... You know, you know the difference?
I do. I know, I know what you're saying, but I just think that, that we just need to, we need to really be sure before we send this upstairs to council that, uh, that we're really, really clear about. The problem is, I'm really torn between just how we move this forward and do it in such a way that it's going to have the least impact on our community, the people that live next to these short-term rentals. We've had as many people talk in favor of as we have against, and most of the against has not been anything related to the people that have been, have had good experiences.
Right.
So it's been two situations and two environments that have had the, the bad apple, if you will.
Right.
And I just think that we need to be, we just need to be very clear about what we want and what we would expect that this would happen to our community and our neighborhoods. That's all. I just want to continue to, we never forget that portion of our conversation.
No, I agree. And that's why I made a point of saying, that's why the city did the party house ordinance, to try to get these out of our town. And, yeah, it's taken four years, but now at least we have the tools to do that.
And back to your question, Jake, is if somebody is, it's complaint-driven and they don't have, uh, a, a permit, then that's how you would know that we don't have a permit. There's been, there've been two things that have come before us tonight, and it has been owner occupied, they've never had any problems, and it's been Airbnb. Everybody's used those two, those two things synonymously, and they've had a hundred percent success rate with Airbnbs. And so long as it's owner occupied. And we've got that written into this ordinance, so long as it's owner occupied.
No, what this says is, it has to be your principal residence. You don't have to be there when your guests are there. And we've heard from plenty of people who say, "I go on vacation, and some other family comes and watches my house." So I would not be in favor of saying you can only do home share, because now you're saying, I don't, you know, someone has a different property right than somebody else. You know, you can't, again, it, it's, it's not a problem until it's a problem.
Right. I know that you're on track. I don't mean to get you off track.
No, no, I've got...
A few more things that I want to talk about later, but you carry on.
I've got so many notes that, let's open it for discussion because you guys may, you know,
Yeah.
change my mind on it. So I, I think I've talked more than enough, so who wants to go next?
There was an example of somebody who owned a house, or owned a townhouse, rented it, and then rented? Or did he own two other properties in town?
Yeah, Jason has like three.
Jason has three. Do you own all three, Jason, just to raise your hand?
No, don't ask, don't ask questions.
Okay, no questions. He owned, owns three?
No.
He rents the other two?
He rents and then rents them out.
All right. So that, as this ordinance is written, that would not be allowed?
Um, yeah, he would only get one rental.
Per, per property?
Your primary residence.
Your primary residence. So he could rent out?
His primary residence.
Exactly.
Right, but if he didn't live somewhere, then this ordinance wouldn't allow him to do it. That's the way it's written.
Okay. He could, he could, long-term, he could long-term rent beyond thirty days, correct?
Yeah, so like if you owned an income property.
Right.
And you didn't live there, you could only long-term rent it. You couldn't have that income property for short-term.
Right.
Rental. Is that correct?
Yes, the way this is written.
Okay.
I would like to know more about what the hosting monitoring company does. Because we've talked about Airbnb, we've talked a little about VRBO. But if the hosting monitoring company that would be monitoring which properties are being rented out as short-term rentals or home sharing, if they were covering all or most all of the home rental agencies, because there are several, and there's more coming up, that might be a way to really monitor and get a better picture of how many people are renting, so that we could really enforce this, so that we could force people to get a permit or else bring legal action against them. So I, I don't know exactly what these companies do, but I think that would be something really important to look at. And I would like to be sure that whatever fees are being charged are going to cover the cost of the host monitoring company.
Yeah, on page six, uh, they, they give a couple of examples of what, uh, this one host monitoring company can do. They, they monitor compliance, they send out the obtained, they help with the permitting process, but they also monitor and enforce, and they have a twenty-four-seven hotline for people to call. But again, how that gets done and whether we do in-house or out-house, that's, that's a city council decision. I mean, we could recommend, you should probably use a company that knows what they're doing as opposed to trying to do it in-house.
Because enforcement is sort of the lynchpin of this whole thing.
Yeah, it doesn't work if it's not enforced. Um, okay, who else wants to make comments, and I'll go through my notes?
Well, there was one question that I didn't quite understand, that maybe the attorneys can help with this concern about the coastal commission and how they get involved.
Yeah, we're doing, sorry. Because we're only doing it one year, there's no property vested right. You get a permit for a year, and then it goes away automatically, then you have to reapply.
So that issue goes away.
That's why they didn't want to do it for four years, because then someone could probably argue, "Ah, you know, you're taking away my property right." Well, no, we're, we're giving you a permit, and that permit renews every year. I think that's the idea.
With respect to the coast, sorry. I was going to say, just to add to that, uh, the coastal commission, there, there's no residentially zoned properties within the coastal zone.
Right.
Thank you.
We're not, we're not close enough to the beach. Um, another thing, the name and address, uh, being on the city website as a registry?
Yeah, that's, that's a terrible idea.
That's, that's questionable in my mind.
You can't... There, there's got to be something better we can do than be posting addresses and phone numbers of people. And basically letting anyone who searches on Google know who's going to be out of town in our city, right? There's got to be something we can do better than that.
I agree. That security issue is terrible.
Yeah.
But, but having a mechanism where people, where residents, where neighbors can, and obviously calling the police is the, is the first line of defense. Uh, calling the hot number, the hotline number, you know, is there a forum on the, the city website where people can write letters about stuff? You know, I, I'm, I'm thinking about how, uh, input on the pilot program. I think the pilot program is a great idea. I think sunsetting in a year, uh, is great because it allows everyone to kind of take a, take a breather and look and see how it's working. And so how, what's the mechanism for public input beyond a forum like this? Obviously, the forum like this is, is very important at the city council, but is there a digital forum for that? Just a thought.
And somebody mentioned, huh, another city that has an anonymous link for complaints, which seems fairly easy enough to incorporate.
Um, and there's, I still have a question in my mind. Are we limiting the number of transactions, or are we limiting the number of days in this ordinance?
As it's written, there is no limit.
No limit.
At all.
Okay.
And I don't, someone convinced me why we need a limit.
Yeah.
I, I don't. I'm, I'm just questioning because we had this conversation earlier, and I'm not clear, I was not clear.
No, I'm the one who brought it up, because it was, it, to, to just perhaps deter opening up entirely. And, and three hundred and sixty-five days a year, you have this constant. That was just my thought process, which is why I brought that up. Is there any limit to occupancy?
Yeah, there's something about so many adults per room.
Not, not currently, but that's something you can, uh...
Oh, maybe that was in the...
You can add.
I've read so many of these from different cities.
No, I think there was something in there.
Yeah.
Well, there, there should be a head count per bedroom. I mean, that should absolutely...
I think it's two adults per room maximum, not including children, is what I recall.
I would actually lobby for a head count versus a parking, I don't know. It seems to require parking in excess of what the residential zone requires is a little challenged to me. So if you own a five-bedroom home, you certainly don't have to supply ten, I think it was like...
One per bedroom.
One per bedroom, five stalls.
That'd be five parking spots.
On property.
Yes.
I mean, it doesn't exist now, so how could we?
I got five.
Well, that's another conversation.
You're going to run out four rooms.
I believe, I believe the requirement for the occupancy is not in the current ordinance, but, yeah. It might have been in the previous, previous version.
It was in the previous.
But, uh, if, if it's, uh, if it's the commission's wish, we could, we can add perhaps, uh, maximum of, um, two occupants per bedroom.
Yes.
And, and add that as part of the permitting requirement.
Um, all right, what else do you guys want? I've got a whole bunch of other things I want to add here.
There was, there was also something that I think somebody brought up about, um, making, um, a requirement that, um, or giving, giving the city more powers as to, um, to prevent people from advertising something that they're not permitted to do. And being able to make that a, um, a violation.
Yeah.
I thought it said, no, you can't advertise bridal showers or parties or things like that. I thought that was part of the ordinance.
That is, that is...
Yeah, I, I wonder if what Sam's talking about is, I think Hermosa Beach was trying a program where they would, they hired a third party to kind of scour the web for listings. And if a listing showed up that's not permitted in the, that's, they don't have a license.
Right.
They would be notified, they'd be on notice, they would get whatever it is.
Yeah, that's why I think it's hosting.
Exactly, that's part of the enforcement deal.
That's why...
Is that what you mean, Sam?
Yeah, it's one of the things I think everyone recognizes, that, um, it's difficult to prove things sometimes. And if we put some sort of, if we have the ability, legal ability, to, to call advertising for something that you don't have permit for, a violation, um, that is something that we can readily gather from host compliance and whatnot. They have the ability to capture when people are advertising for something that they're not permitted to do, including people who don't have the proper permit. So, um, I just wanted to, to mention that that could be a possible add-in to the ordinance.
Is there any way, from, you know, my understanding of the way these are advertised at the, the different hosting platforms like Airbnb or VRBO, that they do not give a specific address? So that's, that's one of my challenges, and if you have a hosting monitoring company, how are they going to find the specific address? And then, then be able to research who owns the property and get to them if they're not following the rules?
Um, I mean, luckily El Segundo, so, I don't know, no one's really going to drive around and look at the homes, right?
Right. So, so our, our understanding in speaking with the folks over at host compliance is that they have, you know, they scour the web, and then they're, they're also able to ascertain comments that were left by certain people. I guess there's a digital footprint as to where those, uh, coordinates were left. Um, if there are photos that are attached to the, um, to the listing, or perhaps, uh, someone who left a review le, uh, has a photo on there, there are ways that they, they have that can help them with, uh, GPS coordinates, narrow it down to the point where they can pretty much tell which properties they are. They have an IP address.
Yeah, but the IP address is the address of the person who's giving the review, and you give the review after you've left the property.
Right.
Because they ask a few days later, because I just did this recently. And I know that the request for review came maybe five days afterwards. So GPS coordinate wouldn't be appropriate, and the address wasn't included in anything until I paid my money and was not going to arrive in three days. So I question what they're saying.
I, I like the idea of every time you get your permit, you get a permit number in El Segundo, and part of the requirements of a host is that when you advertise, you post your permit number. Right? Whatever that number is. So... Not an address, it's a permit number, but the city staff and homestay or whoever's enforcing it can use that permit number, right? First, if there's no permit number, you have a problem. You can go find that person. If there's a permit number, you can check and see if it's legitimate or whatever. So that's something I think we should add in there to help with the enforcement is, uh, a requirement for a host is to, once you get your permit, every advertisement has to have your El Segundo, what do we call it, short-stay permit number, um, advertised. And then I got this one from, excuse me, Los Angeles. "No host shall offer, advertise, or engage in home sharing in a non-residential building, including but not limited to a vehicle parked on the property, a storage shed, a trailer, or any temporary structure, including but not limited to a tent." Like, I never thought of that, but absolutely, we're not letting people sleep in someone's tent in the, right?
There are people that are renting out tents on their properties.
In this town?
Not in this town, but in Los Angeles.
Yeah, let's, let's be sure that no one's renting out a car in someone's driveway for someone to live in.
So what if you have a cool retro, uh, Airstream trailer? That, well, hold on, that's in the back.
Yeah, right.
That's part, you know, it's an ADU. Is it, you know, it's on, I guess, I guess it's, it's, if it's a, it's a, I, I'm just throwing out things.
You're just causing problems.
No, I, no, I think that's a really good scenario.
Then they should come in and get permitted, and say, "Hey, I know, I can't have a guy sleep in the car, but I want a permit." And staff will be like, "Okay, yeah, cool retro thing. I'm not going to put, except you have cool retro." But, uh, case by case, I mean, the whole purpose is, if you're going to do this, you got to come to the city, tell us who you are, tell us what you're doing, and tell us you're going to follow the rules. If you don't, you don't get to do it anymore.
Exactly.
Pretty simple. Um, oh, I like this one, too.
I'm sorry, Chairman Baldino, and just, just maybe this will address your, that issue, is, um, the way it's written is that "One short-term rental unit per parcel," and it specifically states, "Either of a permitted single-family dwelling unit or portion thereof, or of a permitted ADU."
But not both.
Yeah.
That's correct, that's correct. So it does, it does have language in there that stipulates that it is of the actual residence. So, um, one could take the position, I'm suing our city attorney, with that, anything other than that cannot be used as a short-term rental.
I got it, but just put that definitely clear language in there.
We can do that, definitely, no.
Let's make this moron-proof, you know, because your idea of a residence...
Some properties in the Hollywood Hills that have advertised for tents.
Right, so let's be explicit and clear about that.
Um, not a problem.
That was another thing. Thank you for bringing that up. What was it, item nine about, yeah. "No more than one booking per dwelling unit is allowed on any given night." And I asked the attorney why that was there, and he gave me his explanations. Someone explain to me why we need this.
Prostitution.
Well, come on.
What other reason would there be?
What, what about...
For Airbnbs? Someone's got an ADU in a bedroom?
Well, if somebody has an ADU and they want to use it as, as a house of prostitution, they could certainly rent it out more than once a night.
Okay, but...
That's the only, that's the only explanation I can come up with.
All right, we had Ms...
Maybe somebody else is more creative.
No, Ms., Ms. Wood said, "I've got a room in my house, and I've got a casita out back, and so that would be two bookings on one property." What's wrong with that? Assuming for a second there's no prostitution.
Take that right off.
And now you're talking to...
Doesn't it say, though, it's only one unit per?
Yes, it does. It says one unit per address.
Yeah, it does. And my question is, why do we have that?
Oh, why do we have that?
Make an argument why we need that.
Oh, no, because you're absolutely right, because if you're only renting out one unit, you're not going to rent it out more than once in a night, one would hope.
Right. So, why...
You asked me to tell you why. That's the only...
I appreciate it. It's creative. I never thought of that.
I like you went right to it.
Yeah. But yeah, if, why do we limit it to one booking per residential home, per night?
Well, um, in, well, why not?
Are you saying if there's three bedrooms, and they're renting out three bedrooms to three different people?
People, yeah, as opposed to just one booking per address or per... So you'd have...
They got to follow all the other rules about noise and trash and everything else, like everybody else, right? Maybe their house is subdivided, and they've got... I'm just saying, why are we creating rules for something that we don't even really know how it works? And if it's not a problem, why are we saying you can't do it anymore?
Right, I mean, we know it exists, because we heard from several people who are doing it currently, and those people have also never had any. And those people have also never had any issue.
No issue. So we're taking away something they're doing now that obviously is not hurting anyone.
So why is that different than renting out the primary residence and the ADU?
I don't know. That's, that's another good question. You know, we're learning here, but.
Because I sort of feel it's the same thing, I mean, I like that.
Well, if you look at page five, it says the intent of the ordinance is to allow one STR on a property in all residential zones.
Right, but we're writing it.
If you're only allowing one STR on a property, why would you be renting out more than one STR?
Because you have more room.
Right, my, my question is, why are we writing it to say only one STR per property?
That's the question.
If they comply with all the other regulations that we're gonna think of, and all the things we're gonna do to try to make it so that these don't harm any neighbors.
Then only one unit can be permitted as an STR. Alright, so if, I'm reading, if all dwelling units on the parcel are under common ownership, such as a duplex, triplex, or apartment complex, then only one unit can be permitted as an STR. So you're talking about rooms in a house, as opposed to this.
As well as, as well as the, the back house. Then you've got rooms in the house, as I think it was Robin Wood talked about.
And is there a distinction between R1 and R2?
Yes, there is.
There are, there's certain restrictions for R2s and R3s.
No matter what it is, it's, it's just one unit.
Just because it's a different beast, you don't want that. I think that makes sense.
On that commentary, I, I have one question. Right now, you know, a homeowner would come in, pull a permit, and let's say the house has three bedrooms, and there's an ADU in the back, which has one bedroom. And we would give him a permit for, maybe for the maximum of, let's say, parking is the issue. So he needs to have parking for the three bedrooms, right? So, so this ordinance is written so that they could rent, they have the option of renting out the house, doing an STR on the house, or STR on the ADU. One, one at a time. If, if you allow both to be done, do we now provide the total maximum number of parking for the possibility? Or do we still, you know, keep the maximum number at, only at one of the buildings? You see what I'm saying? So if, if you include ADU, you're gonna need additional parking.
Yeah, and I see how the.
ADU's gonna be long-term, though.
No.
No, not necessarily.
I think the conversation we're having is, can you do short-term rental for both units at once?
At the same time.
Yeah.
Right?
The current ordinance is not written that way.
No, it's not. It's more restrictive than that.
And you restricted that, staff restricted that for the reason that we're talking about, which is parking primarily.
I, I can respond to this. Are you, Chair Baldino, did you initially mean to reference 415-8A9? The requirement that no more than one booking per dwelling unit is allowed for any given night?
Hold on, 415.
I thought that's the provision you were initially talking about, and then we kind of drifted into the.
Yeah, there's a lot of drifting, 415-89, no more than one booking, yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay. Should I explain to the benefit of the rest of the commissioners why I added it in there? What I was thinking of when I added.
So you know, he wrote it, so.
Right.
That's right.
If we change it, he's gonna get personally upset.
What I was thinking of when I added that is, one house, a single-family house with multiple bedrooms, and an owner who is not present at the time of the short-term rental. Do you want to allow each one of those bedrooms potentially to be rented to a separate person on the same night? And there are a number of possible concerns with that. Obviously, from a land use perspective, that's much more commercially intensive in nature than just a one short-term rental. That's the land use perspective. From a public safety perspective, obviously it operates more like a hotel. You go into a hotel, you have a certain door of a certain type with an automatic door closer for the fire department. You have smoke detection in every room, you have certain locks to protect you from the other people who may be in the room next to you who you don't know. All those things, that may be, if you wanted to open it up to more than one booking in a, in a single-family home per night, you may want to think of all those things, because it could open up a real can of worms and lead to some really bad results. It may be something that you want to talk to your police chief about before going there. That was the, that was the thought I had in my head, I wasn't thinking about the other option of, you know.
Right, home sharing.
Well, home sharing, obviously.
Home sharing's totally different, because somebody's there.
Home sharing is totally different, because you have a chaperone on site, but so was the other situation. If you have two separate structures, the ADU, you wanted to allow separate structure, totally separate entrance, separate locks. And, you know, one bedroom in the single-family house that's also on the property, that also doesn't raise those concerns. But that was what I was thinking when I put that provision in there.
No, it makes sense, you don't want to have un-owner-occupied units being rented to multiple people on the same night. It causes friction and chaos and everything else, right?
When it's not set up for, when there's not independent locks on the doors.
Right, 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 right. But I, I, I think we've heard public testimony about owner-occupied units having success with that. Then who are we to take it away? So maybe we say, number nine says, no more than one booking per dwelling unit is allowed on any given night unless the unit, unless the unit is being home-shared, and the resident remains on-site for the totality of the rental period. Right?
How do you monitor that?
How do you monitor that?
Yeah, how do you know that they're, they're not gone on vacation for three weeks?
Well, that's the same question with all this. You, you, you find out it's a problem when it becomes a problem. But if people are doing it now and it's not a problem, then who are we to say, don't do this anymore? Right?
Yeah, I hear, I hear you, I'm just.
One other thing I wanted to add is, since we have the social host ordinance, I would like a requirement of hosts to post that at their place that they're renting. And maybe you guys can do like a, because the way the ordinance read is not very clear. But like, house rules or rules of Airbnb that kind of details or gives the bullet points of, you know, no loud noise after 10:00, you can't do this, you can't do that, no, you know, your trash has to be, whatever those are. Make it a requirement, and it sounds like people are already doing that who are doing this right. So I think that's something we should incorporate. And the loud party ordinance is no loud sounds after 10 o'clock at night, is that correct? Is it 10?
That's the city's noise ordinance, correct.
Okay, so then, why don't we also add into our social, whatever we're calling it, short-term rental, that there shall be no use of sound amplifying equipment, as the term is defined, after 10:00 PM, and no outdoor congregation of more than eight people during a short-term rental. Right, so now we're boots and suspenders, or belt and suspenders? It's just a proposal.
And before a certain hour, and before 10 o'clock in the morning.
But we don't have anything like that now.
I think the, the noise ord.
Are you getting that to the near the park?
What is the ordinance now?
I believe it's till 8:00 AM, I believe, in the morning. So it's supposed to be quiet between 10:00 PM and 8:00 AM, if I remember correctly. Let's post that. Let people know who are coming, you know, don't be loud after 10:00 or before 8:00. And that could just be something that's posted. What else? Alright, I think those were the points I had. Now, what else do people want to talk about? What is the consensus? I know there's talk about limiting it, I'm not in favor of putting a limit on the number of days.
No, they said that's not part of the ordinance.
I know.
It's not part of the ordinance now, I think it would certainly encourage, as opposed to short-term rental, a more long-term rental, where I think that's, I think that's a better thing to kind of go after than a short-term rental. So it might, it might encourage that.
Well, I mean, the, the way the platform is set up, it's for short-term rentals, that's what people do when they do this sort of thing. I really, really, really support the idea that you must live in the home. I really am more in favor of home sharing than absentee landlord rentals. Because there is a housing shortage, and this just encourages using residences not for long-term housing. And I think if people have rental properties and they're renting them out for short-term, or if people are gone for half of the year or more and they're renting out a place, that's where you get a party house. I think home sharing is what we should have.
I think principal residence is critical. I think you, this cannot be an investor, a shell corporation, you know, running an Airbnb. It's gotta be principal residence.
Gotta be a person, a landlord person.
I don't think it has to be home share, you know, I think that's a, there's certainly several people here who use that, and that's great. But, you know, there are, I know several people in El Segundo who go on vacation for a month and a half, and that's, you know, the Airbnb sort of funds their vacation. And I think that unless they're doing something bad, unless it's affecting their neighbors, I don't think it's a bad thing. So.
Yeah, the way it is written, it's only your primary residence that you're allowed to, to partake in this activity.
Yep.
I think as the ordinance is written, it's what I've been in support of from the beginning, but I definitely think that the conversation we're having is very purposeful and gives us to a much more detailed permitting process than I ever envisioned, which is important in making sure that it is activated without incident. With the pilot program, the, and at first, I, I honestly thought that that was gonna create more administrative, I mean, my concern with that is that we're gonna be back here nine months from now and having this debate again, but that's okay. That's part of the, that's the purpose. So I think the sunset clause kind of takes away a lot of the, the fear that this is something permanent that's not gonna be evaluated. It's gonna be an iterative process.
I agree.
Yeah, the permitting is onerous, but that was the intention, you know, that's the idea. And I, I know a lot of people don't want to be over-regulated, but I think that's the only way we can do this. It's the only way you can keep tabs on, on if it's working or not, so.
Carol, I want to go back to your discussion about owner-occupied. And I think that that has a lot of validity to eliminate issues. And I think it encourages a much healthier environment. However, I know that the very first time when I was not for any of it, the only way it really felt good was to be owner-occupied. Not that I would do that or have done it, but yet you talked about friends that, that did that, and you just mentioned somebody you know, and they, they were gone for a month and a half, and it helps to defray the cost of that. And, and the thing that you worry about when you open up just a little bit and you allow it, that it then gets someplace that we don't want it to be. It gets, it gets out of control, and it's unrecognizable. What our intentions are, are the good stuff. It's the stuff that you just mentioned, or your friends that do that. And then you want to eliminate that we're going to have problems in the future if we don't foresee them. Or at least be more conservative in allowing just a little bit to happen as we go forward.
But isn't that what the.
Rather than to just to open it all up and just, boom, we're all in, and then, oh my God, now we gotta take it back, because that's not working. And, and I think that if, if we're more, if we're more thoughtful and conservative about it, it doesn't have to happen overnight. Yes, it's already here, and you're right, Ryan, it's a, it's a matter of our taking what's already here, trying to make it so that there's a permit process, that we've got control over it, the city does, and that it's, there's a process, if it's not working for the neighborhoods, that there's a place for them to go. And kind of clean it up. But I just worry that if we, if we just open the floodgates, if we do it a little bit at a time, we, it can, it can end up where, where we want it to be.
I hear you, and I, I recognize your point. And I, you know, looking at the ordinance, I think it's pretty darn well-written. We wanted to make just a few adjustments to it. And since there is the sunset clause, that's the only thing that really saves it for me, because.
For me, too.
This is a temporary thing, and we will be back here again to talk about it again, I'm pretty darn sure, just to evaluate it. And we can say, oh my gosh, this is working so well, let's leave it just the way it is, or make it more liberal. But I, the way it's written right now, I think it's, it's pretty effective. We have to have permits, we have to supervise it, we have to have police action, and limit the wildness.
Well, what would the city look like hypothetically, if absolutely every house on every block had, had a permit, went to the city and had a permit to do what we're saying is, is that the future?
Well, I think you and I have had this conversation, I would never, I would never rent my home. I just, that's not my personality, whether I'm there, whether I'm not there, you would never do it. So I don't know that that's the reality, I mean, it's, it's gonna be a personal preference. And if people are interested in it, they're probably already doing it.
Doing it, yeah.
And we're gonna now have a way to actually monitor and account for who's doing it.
Yeah, it, it is a property rights issue, it absolutely is. So, and the ordinances are there for a reason. It's, they've been slow to get going, and I think that's what all this frustration's been about. But if we can get the ordinances to do their job, I think this is gonna be a different story.
Well, it sounds there's a consensus to move forward. I think this has been discussed here well enough, it really needs to go up to city council. Are there, I, I made some proposals to, for additional kind of rules to add on. One is the posting of, I'm gonna try to describe these, because I, I don't want it to come back, I want it to go forward with. So let me just see, I'll, I'll go one by one, and just let me know before we do the thing. I, I want the hosts to have to post the rules of short-term rentals, you know, the requirements. No loud noise after 10:00, no loud noise before.
That's in there.
Is that?
Yeah, I read that, that's in there.
Okay, great. I, I want something expressly saying, you know, the, I'll find it. The section that says this is for residential use, yeah, overnight accommodations, not for weddings or parties or anything. I think we should add in there, and not for storage of personal property in residential zones for commercial purposes. Because again, my fear is someone's gonna rent out their garage and we lose another space.
And, and Ryan, going back to the posting the rules, should the city produce an actual thing?
That would be ideal.
These are the rules, here's the number you call, here's the number for the police department. If you have an issue, I mean, it's, it's a thing that's gotta be posted, you know, it's in big type, and every single host has to stick it up on the, on the, on the refrigerator, wherever.
Yeah, I agree, conspicuously posted. And then I like the idea of having the permit number having to be part of the advertisement. Your, you know, once you get your permit number, it has to be conspicuously displayed in advertisement for enforcement purposes. I, I would recommend to city council to use an outside service for this pilot program, because they'll be better at monitoring, so that we can get some data back of how many permits, how many nights, what's the TOT tax.
We'd like to actually ask that company to join us at the, the meeting when we meet with the city council, that can kind of show us how, in detail, how it's gonna work as well.
Okay, that would be great.
You're gonna add limit occupancy to per room?
I thought I said that.
The occupancy.
It's not in there, I didn't.
Two girls per, yeah, it's not in this one, it was in the old one.
We'll, we'll add it.
Okay.
Did you also want to require that that maximum occupancy be included in the ads as well, along with the permit number? Maximum occupancy six permit number?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yes, that's a great idea.
You, you also mentioned prohibiting rental of car, RV, tent.
Yeah, yeah, that language I gave about, you're only, you're only renting out a residential space, not a tent or a car or a shed or something like that.
And you gave clear direction not to add addresses on, on the website.
Yeah, no, don't post addresses, and there's got, we've got to figure out, maybe that's this vendor who's gonna tell us, this is how the neighbors call to complain about that ADU. Or maybe the, the host has to give out phone numbers to neighbors or something like that. That, that has to be determined. I, I do not like the idea of just anyone Googling El Segundo to find out who's on vacation or.
There, there was one question that I had, that I'd like some clarification on, is on page eight, it talks about when the ordinance passes. It's 415-6.
Oh, I had that highlighted, thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, and, and what it talks about is, when the, after the permits, after the ordinance passes, that there would be this window of opportunity where people can, can obtain the permit. And that permit would sunset the following year in December of 2021. So then the 2020. And the question I had was, if, if somebody misses that window to obtain a permit, the way it's written, those people would not be able to obtain a permit. And so, you know, somebody who doesn't do a lot of this may miss that window and may come in in February or March, and would request, would re. and would request, would want to, to, to do this, they would not be able to obtain a permit. I'm asking perhaps that window should be, would be wider.
Is the window required because it's a sunset provision? Because I don't understand why that window, I read that, and I said, "That doesn't make sense if I wanna come in after the game, and I've never done this before." So, why do we have the window at all? We should just say that if you want a permit, you've got a year to do it, and then all the permits expire at the end of 2020? Okay.
So you can have the permit for a month.
But the sunset-
Exactly. You can get it in November of 2020.
Right.
And then it's over, yeah, for one month. Exactly.
If it's worth it, you, you go through the process. That's a good point, Sam.
Yeah, I think, I think the intent was that they wanted to start with a, a small number so that they can kind of do a case study, but I'm just concerned that somebody's gonna walk in on February, March, and I'm not gonna be able to give, give them a permit.
Right. No, good point, Sam. Any other things we discussed that we feel like we wanna add to this before we take it to a vote?
So, where did we net out on one rental, one transaction per property? We have it as-is?
I propose keeping it as it is.
Well, yeah, let's-
Yeah, let's, let's do that.
That's, that's the one that's gonna be the sticky widget, because I would, I would propose that that's a great rule unless it's home-sharing.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Kinda make an exception, but we've gotta get a majority on that. So, let's see if we have consensus on everything but that, and then we'll vote on that, and then we can vote on that other one thing. Does that make sense procedurally? Looking at my two attorneys, is that the cleanest way to do it? Because I believe we have a consensus on everything but that one issue.
Right, take a straw vote on everything but that.
Yeah, right? Or should we do a straw vote on that and just find out? Because if we don't have consensus, then we just don't do it.
Can I ask a clarifying que, I mean, part of my concern is timing, because I feel like this will go to council and they will have additional changes and revisions. So if we make that change now, does it have to come back to planning commission before it goes to council? No?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna send it up-
Okay.
Saying, "We wanna add these things," and then it's gonna, you know, they're gonna act like it's the first time it's ever happened.
Yeah, this is just our recommendations anyway, and then when it hits upstairs, they're on their own.
Okay, so straw poll, who would be in favor of my idea of allowing additional rentals per night if it's home-sharing? I know I am. You're not allowed to vote in the audience. Thank you, though. Okay, just me? Just two? Okay. So then, if it's not gonna pass, I, I won't make the recommendation. Oh, Eduardo?
I, I, I have a question now.
You gotta step up to the podium and tell me.
With regards to the registry, which is on page 11 of the ordinance, 14-15-9. Just wanna get some clarity on that, because I know that our, what we had envisioned would be, you know, a listing of, kinda like what Santa Monica does, has, has, I think they have the, the addresses on there. And anyhow, what we were also thinking is, is putting in the phone numbers. Now, was, is the commission's direction to just not put in phone numbers and just have addresses, or not have a registry, or kinda keep a registry, but-
I think the city should have a registry. Our concern is you're posting this online for anybody to Google and say, "Oh, let's look at all the Airbnbs in El Segundo, and I'm gonna drive by every house and see which one's empty," or, and then posting the phone numbers seems a bit intrusive.
Yeah, I mean, we could definitely do that, but I, I just wanna alert the, the commission to that last sentence, though, because it does say, "The city shall publish the registry, and a copy will be made available electronically to any person upon request." So, I guess the question is, should we modify or delete that sentence?
Well, and the point of that is for enforcement purposes?
Well-
Why is there a registry?
Well, I think it was more to inform the public and the residents and-
Well, we need a registry because the hosting platform needs to have a registry.
Yeah, I know where the city needs it, but why are we, why are we posting it?
Well, why are we publishing it?
You could make it available. I guess you don't have to. This is what Santa Monica, and I think Dana Point even does, is a way to, to involve the public and let them know where these things are, apparently, in those communities.
So they don't consider that a security risk in any way?
Oh, and Dana, I, I've looked at Dana Point's website, and they have a map, little dots on every lot where there's one of these permitted.
I mean, in reality, if they're occupied, if they're being rented during that time period, they're, you could make the argument they're potentially safer, less-
That's right. If they're being rented out, then there's people there.
Right.
Keep it, keep in mind, too, that any application made to the city is a public document. Well, then why don't we say, "And so the city shall publish a registry"? We just said, "The city shall make a copy available to any person upon request." Right? So then if someone in town wants the registry, you come and get it, or you email someone and you get it, but it's just not out there on the web forever and ever. Yeah, that's fine. Right?
Yeah.
That way, if you want it, you can get it. If you have a question, is that, is that an ADU, or is that an ADU? I'm getting my anagram's messed up. Is that a short-term rental? You, you can contact the city. They'll give you a list of all, and you can figure out if that property is on the registry or not. But I just don't like the idea of it being on the internet for everyone to see. Yeah. So, thank you, Eduardo.
And then really, who's going to make that inquiry about wanting to know who's on the registry?
When there's a problem.
When there's a problem.
Yeah, so someone's gonna call the city and-
Somebody sees, "Oh, there's people coming and going across the street all the time. I'm gonna find out."
People will ask.
Yeah.
Many people will ask.
That's fine.
Okay, so I think we've mentioned all the modifications we want to what the staff has done. Thank you, by the way, for all the work on this. I know it's a lot of time. So, I, I think we have all of the, any questions on anything we've asked to add to this? I think we've been... Great, okay. So, I guess, is there any further discussion, or should we just make a motion and?
I move, we approve Zone Text Amendment to Allow and Regulate Short-Term Rentals EA 1180 and Zone Text Amendment Number ZTA 17-01 as amended.
All right, I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I didn't hear. Yeah, okay, great. Thank you, everyone. So, when, since we've said, "Let's get city council," do we know, do we delay things by putting too many changes, or?
I, I'm thinking it'll be a meeting in, in August.
In August?
Yeah.
Okay, can we take extra steps to advertise that this is going to city council on whatever date it is, since we can't tell people now who are here, so that we can get as much participation as possible?
Yes, yes. And if anybody would like to, if anybody would like to leave their contact information, emails, and whatnot, we'd be happy to contact you with the specific information about the meeting.
Thank you, Sam. Okay. Next on the agenda, continued public business nun. And then, Sam, do you have anything else to add? Okay?
I don't.
All right. And any planning commissioner comments?
No, I just wanna say that it's a, that, again, while we all love our wonderful town, and, and these kinds of issues are very difficult, I enjoy sitting up here with you to be a part of the process, to make sure that things do head in the right direction. That's just what I wanna say.
I agree. I think it's a great dice. But for those of you still remaining, I want you to understand something. The biggest threat about changing this town is coming from Sacramento right now. There are bills in the state, and the way it works is, you know, we, we make planning and zoning, the city, and we make our codes. But if the state makes a code on the same subject, it automatically usurps and takes away whatever code we have, right? So if the state mandates that we have to do something, we have to do something. And there are bills happening in Sacramento that basically wanna take an R1 zone and change it into an R3 zone. There are bills that will require us to have housing where we don't have housing now. And so, to the extent you can, try to stay informed about what's happening in Sacramento, because if they pass a law that says you can build a fourplex under R1, which was actually floating around, was that AB 50? Am I exaggerating here?
An eight-unit.
AB 50 said, "In any R1 zone, you can knock it down and put up a fourplex," because there's this housing shortage in, in California. So, that above anything else will change what this city is. If Sacramento says, "Hey, developer, if you buy a single-family home, you can put up whatever you want." I mean, we, we've zoned our own city, right? These are the R1s, R3s, commercial, like, we spent a lot of time figuring out what works best for us to keep El Segundo what it is, and it terrifies me when I hear and read about people in Sacramento thinking they know better than what we know about how our town should be run. So, please, pay attention to it, send an email, do not let this happen to the extent possible.
On that note, in the last month and a half, the, the city council and the mayor have written to, to the state, being against, saying that we're, we're against seven or eight bills that's on, it's on, in committee right now. And in, within the next couple of weeks to a month, there'll be a public statement that comes out from the city that describes the various different things that are happening at the state level and, and specific contact information where you can write a letter directly to the state as well.
So please do that. That is, that is the biggest threat we have to, to changing this town is someone from Sacramento thinking they know better than what we know. Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd be remiss if I did not bring up the fact that, and thank the city for starting to implement bike lanes. So, those started to go down today in ma, not bike lanes, but sharrows. No one's taken any bike, car lanes away, so just a reminder that bikes are allowed on the roads, and it's a safer environment for everybody. So, thanks to Ken Berkman and Public Works and city council.
And there's a concert at Library Park this Sunday at 4:00.
A Beatles-covered band, right?
Woo!
All right, awesome.
Just imagine.
Well, I think it's a cover band. It might be the Beatles. I don't know.
All right, we are adjourned. Our next meeting will be here July 11th at 5:30. Thank you all.